Good evening. Call to order, the June 24, 2013 City Council of San Carlos Successor Agency to Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody in the House want to change anything? Hearing none. Moving on. Report from closed session. There was no closed session. Counsel Communication and Announcements. Ms. Clapper?
Yes, I wanted to announce about the upcoming meeting this, on tomorrow night, about the Supervisorial District Lines Advisory Committee meeting in East Palo Alto Council Chambers for anyone that's interested in how they're taking a look at the district lines within our county. And the one that was located in our District Number Three was in Half Moon Bay, so some of you may not have ventured over there in the evening. But if you're interested, tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM in the East Palo Alto Council Chambers. And I also wanted to announce some CERT training, which is the Community Emergency Response Teams. Two weeks ago, they, we sponsored a, I'm saying "they" because I'm part of the group, they put on a training event that actually was intended to simulate a post-earthquake building search. And we worked in teams of eight, four people at an incident command post and four people in a building that was donated by Vivian over on Branston Road to use for actually doing the exercise and was a great opportunity for everyone involved. And a damage assessment training is going to be offered to the team members this Wednesday evening. So I want to commend all the members that came out to participate and stay trained, as well as the staff that helped put that training on. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that I attended the commemorative plaque dedication at the old San Carlos High School site yesterday. I think about 100 people that were there, and it was kind of nice. There was at least one representative from every graduating class from 1962 to 1982. While I did not attend San Carlos, I did work there and student teach there, so it's, I have fond memories of playing up there when they were building the school and unfortunately sad memories of when they tore it down. But it was a very nice plaque and a lot of thanks went out to the city. And, Mr. Mayor, you were there as well, and said some very nice things. Anyway, I encourage anybody who's up at Highlands Park to take a look at that plaque. It's really a beautiful way to at least honor the memory of a great school.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Grocott, anything?
I don't know if to bring this up now, or I know we've got the solid waste thing later, but I will bring it up now. The article that was in the paper today about the garbage rates and the fact that our citizens were overcharged, and then there was talk, at least in the paper, about how that would be handled. I think that's something that needs to come to the council and be discussed here about how we intend to refund our citizens, whether that should be included in next year's rates or whether we want to do a rebate. We got a letter today from an attorney who pointed out something that I hadn't thought of, which is people who lived in San Carlos during the time their rates were higher than they ought to have been and since have moved. And how do you deal with those folks? So I think we've got some issues and I think we need to have that issue on the dais.
Mr. Grocott, I agree with you, although I don't necessarily agree with your assumption that the article was completely 100 percent correct.
So, well, I didn't make that assumption.
You sort of implied that it was.
No, I just said what I read.
Okay.
But I do go by what my mother always told me, believe half of what you hear and less of what you read.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody understands just because it's written in the paper doesn't mean that that's what happened.
But my point is, I'd like to see that on the dais.
I have no problem with that, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on the facts, which we don't have all of yet, I don't think.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, actually, that is going to be part of the report tonight on solid waste rates.
Okay.
And to give you a sneak preview, you are right. Some of the comments in the paper and the letter are not correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'm sorry, Ms. Grocott, is that all you have?
Yeah.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to just ask that the council consider putting on its agenda in the not-too-distant future a discussion item to talk about JPA oversight and JPA communication of our, with our representatives and the council. I alluded to that a little bit when we were talking about the sewer rates not so long ago, but it's something I think is pretty important and I'd like to see some improvements in that area.
Okay. Mr. Moore, would you make a note that we can hopefully agendize that in the next couple of meetings, one way along the way? I don't really have anything, except as Mr. Collins said, I was there for the dedication of the plaque on Sunday for San Carlos High School, and it was amazing. I didn't realize there was going to be so many people there. It was, it was at least 100 people there. So it was, it was good. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else, so move on to...
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one item for the community's attention?
Sure.
There, a parking study has, was presented last week, and we're looking for input from the community in the form of a parking survey. And there's a survey specifically for consumers and a survey for businesses. And this is specific to the downtown part of San Carlos and pretty much the whole length of Laurel, going from San Carlos Avenue all the way down to Eaton. And it's available online. You can either complete it, actually, complete it online if you are like me and you forget to get it in the mail or bring it down and drop it off at City Hall. But if you go to the city's website on the homepage underneath Latest News, there is a series of latest news items, one of which is the parking survey. And if you click on that, it gives you the option of either completing the survey online or printing it out and completing the information. And those would be due by Wednesday. And we really would appreciate the community's input on parking in the downtown area. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did not bring this one up because I thought you might, but the mayor and I both attended a retirement party for Chief Frye, who was our, was our fire chief when we had the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Served the city of San Carlos through, well, he, the chief first started his fire service career at Belmont, and then when it became South County Fire, he served through that period. Then when it became the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, he served through that period. He retired, but when it became the Belmont Fire Department, or when we separated ways and there was the Belmont Fire Department, they asked him to be the fire chief, I think, under an interim type of schedule. But all told, Chief Frye was, was involved in the service of the two cities for 39 years. And it was nice to be at his party and give him well wishes for the future and lots of fishing in Montana.
Thank you, Mr. Grocott. I appreciate that. It was a very nice event, and you and I spoke, the mayor and vice mayor of Belmont spoke, and there were some other folks that spoke, and it was just a, it was, there was an awful lot of good things in that room that night. So, thank you. Next item we have is Item 5, Public Comment. These are for items that folks would like to talk to us about that are not on the posted agenda. I have five speaker cards right now. Maybe I have more. I might have six or seven or 100 here. Let's see, how many do we have here? Okay. All right. Got a couple more. And that's 10A, so we'll go for that. All right. So we've got about six people that would like to speak in public comment for items not on the posted agenda. And the first person I have is Bob Danner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I defer my till the very end of opportunity to give Gene Chacona a chance?
Sure. Okay. Gene Chacona?
If there's time afterwards, I would like to thank you.
Okay. We'll put you right, can we, you want to go after these folks, Bob? After these folks? Or at the end? Whatever that was.
You want to go after us? Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Gene Chacona.
Gene, would you move sort of center a bit so that Mike catches you? Thanks so much.
Sure. How's this?
Beautiful.
Oh, good. Better. Good evening. My name is Gene Chacona. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 30 years, and I'm here to speak regarding a future upcoming meeting item on the remodeling of Crestview Park. We have a map of San Carlos, which I will reference during what I have to say. So this concerns the remodeling of Crestview Park and the proposed replacement of the current national natural grass field with synthetic turf, specifically to speak concerning the petitions signed in favor of keeping grass. These petitions will be presented before the next city council meeting. Our group supporting this effort has been gathering petition or opinion poll signatures in favor of keeping and restoring the current grass field, as has been done at Heather School, to provide an improved field for all activities, including organized soccer. The signatures gathered represent the whole city of San Carlos, residents and their visitors to our city and to Crestview Park. It has been stated in the past by some city department members that Crestview Park cannot be considered as a neighborhood park, and the signatures collected from the neighborhood are not valid in representing the city and the general park's use. However, as well as being a community park, Crestview is also a neighborhood park, shared by all, families, visitors, astronomers, dogs, and soccer. And to exclude any of these groups will redefine Crestview solely as a sports park if grass is no longer available. The signed petitions have been collected door-to-door, at hometown days and at hot harvest nights farmer's market, and those addresses are illustrated by this map in the orange color and represent a statement from all over San Carlos that its citizens prefer and want to keep grass at Crestview and at other city parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chacona. Thank you. Do you want to identify your friend who...
This is Gene. My cohort is, this is Gene Danner.
Thank you, Gene.
I'd like to go in, Conny.
I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay. The next speaker I have is Michael Stogner.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name's Michael Stogner. I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I wanted to follow up on a couple statements that were made by Councilman Mark Olbert at the last meeting, which was on June 10 of the 13th. It was Item 10D as in Delta, and it happened around 12:15 in the morning. And this happened right after Councilmember Grocott made a motion to just simply delay the compensation package for the city manager. It would have no negative impact on the city of San Carlos whatsoever, would have had no negative impact on Mr. Malpighi. And unfortunately, none of the other four councilmembers chose to second that motion. So then, Mr. Olbert made two particular statements that I found kind of challenging. And one of them was, he said, "I wasn't here at the time, but I talked with various people who were." And it's my understanding that this conversation that he's talking about is a behind closed doors, closed session of a public employee. And going back to the time he's speaking about is 2011, so the five councilmembers that would have been there would have been Andy Klein, Omar, Ahmad, Randy Royce, Bob Gresseli, and Matt Grocott, two of which are here tonight, two of which are deceased, and one is replaced by Karen Clapper because he removed himself. But no matter how many of the various people he claims to have spoke to, after speaking to these people, he comes to the conclusion that our city manager was hired significantly below market salary. Now, I happen to know that our city manager back in 2011 was hired at $197,000. And I know of no evidence that that was significantly below market. So I would love to see some type of evidence to show that. The other part, and I'll wrap up quickly because I know I'm going over time. He made two specific comments about the integrity of the hiring process and the negotiation process. And there is no way that he would have that information about what a previous council discussed behind closed doors. So I believe the statements are misleading to the public as far as where this knowledge comes from, and I would like to see the city at least put it up on our website to verify that these are true statements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner. The next speaker is Andre Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I come to claim my solar car that was stolen here in San Carlo. And it is, it has been made so that from, since two or three, it has been some kind of a joke. You have ignored my claim. And this was made from, I don't want to say incompetence and ignorance, but somewhat unaware of the facts. And the solar car was made, my solar car was made following my invention. It's something that I conceived in 1993, and this was what we call the art history. You know, before any invention is made, there is a model that is, this one is made out of plastic. Then it took me two years to realize and make the drawing so that I could manufacture the prototype. After the prototype was made, then I had to convince, you know, not investor, but team, volunteer, that I had a viable project. And the project got picked up, and in 1999, we had a car made, and we raced in Japan, Australia, a little bit everywhere. But to tell you what's going on with a pattern, and I have several, one US pattern and three European, is that there is lots of work involved. It's not something that, it comes like a light bulb that you see in advertising, that's not true. You know, there is many drawings and many designs, and because we have to see that the feasibility of the realization should take place. And after you made the prototype, then there is another path that come around, and that one is the availability of stock and the ease of machining for production. So it's a three-step, perhaps four-step, but in this case, it were three major steps. And I have been sorry that nobody understand what an intellectual property mean. Intellectual property beside the intellectual is the production of the property itself. And this is why I claim my solar car, because the solar car was made around and include my invention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio.
Oh, yes. Also, I want, I want to add something, that not all invention, not all engineering project are patentable. And for instance, I want to show you something else. I made these two things here that I never patented because it apply only for solar car. And these are safety device to unlock the body from the frame in case of accident. So, you know, it's left and right, and it can click. And this also took lots of work. And I have designed but no patent on this, so anybody could copy. But as I said, the practicality of the patent is has to be commercial, has to be not only for your own. And in this case, it was just for my own for the solar car, so I did not patent.
Okay.
But I am an inventor by trade. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carpio. The next speaker we have is Bob Black.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Bob Black, citizen of San Carlos for many years. I wish to invite you, members of the council, staff, all friends and neighbors of San Carlos and neighboring cities, to come to Crestview Park after dark during the next two Saturday nights. Be there at least one of those nights. We are going to have Saturn viewing. If you haven't viewed Saturn through a telescope, you're really missing out on something. It is a spectacular experience. I've been doing it for 30 years, and it takes my breath away every time. So if you drive, please park on Crestview Drive. Don't come into the parking lot for safety's sake. And children love flashlights, and if a child wants a flashlight, make sure it's a small flashlight and it's, has a red lens on it and, excuse me, it, a red lens on it, and that the child knows never to shine it in a person's face. This is an event, a family event, and it's free through the wonderful cooperation of the staff of the Parks and Recreation Department, who've supported this activity for over 10 years. And so I want to be sure that you are all welcome, and we'll probably have a number of telescopes there, enough for everybody. And children are always a little impatient, but be sure that they know that they'll have their time. You can't just take a 30-second peek at Saturn and be satisfied. It's like looking at the Mona Lisa. You have to spend a little time with it. So come, come out. If the weather is good, we'll be there, and we hope you all are there and enjoy with this.
So that would be June 29 and July 6, Bob?
That's correct.
At about 8:30, say?
Well, when it gets dark.
Okay.
You can just wander down.
Okay. Sometime 8:15 or so, it'll probably start getting dark.
When it's dark. We can't do much when it's light.
I understand. Which, sorry?
I was just going to ask, which one of those viewing evenings is the pre-viewing party at the mayor's house?
I'll have to recuse myself from the pre-viewing party. I live too close to the park. Thanks, Bob. Thanks very much for your information. Okay. And you think you're going to get to talk tonight? Len Matterman is the next speaker card I have.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's been a long time.
How are you, Len?
Six years since I think I've spoken here. I'm fine, thank you. I'm pleased that the next agenda item tonight calls for spending over half a million dollars of grant money to construct a green street in the industrial section of town. I'm here about preserving an existing green street in the residential section of town. On White Oak Way, there are many 2,000-square-foot homes. A new owner of one has proposed to the city to tear down the home so that a 4,800-square-foot house could be built in its place. My concern is not with the property owner, it's with the city process that, that we've witnessed over the last few months. Several neighbors of the project spoke at a recent hearing of the Design Review Committee, Residential Design Review Committee. This city committee approved the new house with no changes and the removal of the two features that would conceal it, a large redwood and a large oak tree in the front yard. Here's a picture of a street sign that says White Oak Way, and behind the White Oak Way sign is the large oak, somewhat ironically. On this half-mile stretch of White Oak Way from El Camino to White Oak School, there are a total of three oak trees that hang over White Oak Way, and this is one of them that's been approved to be, to be removed and cut down. This healthy oak has undoubtedly survived a lot during its long life, but it could not withstand an anemic city ordinance or the ordinance's enforcement. Many neighbors are concerned that a 4,800-square-foot house is being built among 2,000-square-foot homes in the neighborhood. It adds insult to injury that the city supports the removal of the only things that will shield them from the scale of this new structure, and that a review of this decision would have cost the neighbors about $2,000 just to review it. The city's Design Review Committee and staff did require that a young oak be planted in its place in the front yard. So maybe in several decades, our kids or grandkids may benefit from this new mature tree. Not, not now mature, but would be mature in several decades. You get the point. A mature tree is a prominent feature of the city logo, and it's for good reason. It's a key ingredient that make our neighborhoods so attractive. It is what we value. The actions of our city should match our values. Let's not just build green streets in the industrial section of town, let's maintain green streets in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matterman. Bob Danner? Do you want to speak, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the courtesy of the, allowing the two Jeans to speak ahead of me. I really appreciate that.
No problem.
I'm Bob Danner. I've been around San Carlos for about 42 years now. And I wish to comment on the proposed conversion of Crestview Park from its current use as a multi-use park into a dedicated soccer facility with synthetic turf. Now, synthetic turf, the installation of that will forever change the balanced use that Crestview Park has shared fairly and equitably with the community and soccer for over 35 years. Now, the synthetic turf by its very nature precludes many of those activities that are normally used in the park. But the fundamental question that really needs to be answered is, should the community have a synthetic turf field at Crestview that may be more efficient than natural grass but can be used only by a small group of highly competitive soccer players, namely the San Carlos United Soccer Club? Or should it, the community have a natural grass field that while it may be less efficient, can be used by 100 percent of the community? Now, that's a question of values in our community that begs for an answer. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Okay. We'll move on then. Next item on their agenda is a consent calendar, and this is usually done in one motion unless folks want to remove something. So is there anyone who wants to remove any of the items on their consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, don't we also have to read some of the ordinances?
That's correct. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I would like to remove Item C and Item K.
Okay, Item C and Item K. All right. All right. So let's go down the, should we, well, I guess we're going to have to do, how about if we adopt all the others that don't have resolutions? We have to read all the resolutions? Okay. They don't have resolutions, how about if we adopt all those? Can someone make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt, is that the right word? No. Approve.
Approve.
Items 6A.
All right.
H, I.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's it.
That's it. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay. 6B. Someone like to read that?
I guess I'll read it. Adopt a resolution, 6A is, or, I'm sorry, 6B is adopt a resolution calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2013, for the election of certain officers, three members of the city council, to the full term of four years, as required by the provisions of the laws of the state of California relating to general law cities.
What resolution was that, Crystal?
It's number 60.
2013-60. Is that appropriate? Okay.
Yes, 2013-60.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Or can I do this, can I read them all and then just...
I was just going to say through the chair, Mr. Mayor, actually, the ordinances are what need to be read, not the resolutions.
That's what I thought, and that's why I was very confused when you...
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right.
So let's, let's re...
Well, then, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Items 6D, 6E, 6F, 6G, and 6L.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Moved in second to adopt those items, or approve those items, rather. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Stayed? Okay.
I think J got left out.
I'm sorry?
Item J.
It's got, well, we got to do ordinance. Those are ordinance, those we have to read.
Ordinance, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. That's, hey, we're all working on this thing. We're pulling C and K, and so the first one would be...
J.
J. So if someone would read that, that would be good.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city adopt ordinance number 1465, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, authorizing amendment to Chapter 2.24 of the municipal code deleting the reference to the Arts and Culture Commission at Section 2.24.010, Section 2.24.080, and Section 2.24.18.180. and Section two-point-two-four-one-eight-point-one-eight-zero, adding the powers and duties of arts and culture to the Parks and Recreation Commission at Section two-point-two-four-point-one-six-zero, and updating the commission title of Parks and Recreation to Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt that ordinance, fourteen sixty-five. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. And C and K, we will deal with later at the end. All right, moving on, Item seven, Reports to Council. Climate Action Plan, Progress Report, Scorecard, Strategic Plan. Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're giving you a report to council on the city's climate action plan in a new format we're calling the Climate Action Plan Scorecard. Just to refresh your memory, the climate action plan was adopted by the city council in October of two thousand nine. It was done as part of the general plan adoption process. The plan includes twenty-one measures that are designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions within the city of San Carlos and the city of San Carlos Government Agency. As I noted, it's linked to the general plan, and it also has a provision that every five years, the document is revised and updated. Inside the plan, there are two key reduction goals, the reduction of fifteen percent greenhouse gas emissions by two, from two thousand five levels by 2020, and then that steps up to a thirty-five percent reduction from the two thousand five level by 2030. The scorecard, as you see here, basically provides an up, a quick update at a very summary level on the progress that's been made to date. Since the, the climate action plan was first developed, the city has done three greenhouse gas inventories, the two thousand five community-wide inventory, the two thousand five city agency inventory, and the 2010 city agency inventory. The key findings in the report are that when you compare the 2010 to the 25 city agency reports, there's been a twelve-and-a-half percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions in the, in the city of San Carlos Government Agency, and that compares to the fifteen percent goal that the council set in two thousand nine. So if that trend continues, we're well on our way on that. Seventeen of the twenty-one measures that are in the climate action plan have been achieved, and as I indicated earlier, the next revision of the climate action plan is slated for 2014 in the fall. And then here's just a quick look at the next steps in this process. We still have a community-wide greenhouse gas inventory for year 2010, which has not yet been done. However, staff is working with CCAG and the Joint Venture Climate Task Force on doing that update, and that'll likely occur in the fall. And then once we have that update, we can do the same sort of two thousand five to 2010 comparison that we've already done for the city government agency. In terms of the climate action plan, the intent is to continue to work on the existing measures, and in particular, obviously, focus on the four that have not yet been substantial progress. Also, as I noted, the intent is to talk about coming up with a program to de, to upgrade and perhaps revise the current climate action plan by roughly a year from now. And then finally, the, the thought going forward is to look at the possibility of having a report like this tied to the annual green reports that we provide to the city council every summer, so that you get both the green report and the climate action plan scorecard at the same time. And then that obviously will continue to inform the council as you get closer to the two target dates for your greenhouse gas reductions, both in 2020 or 2030. Staff anticipates that as 2020 draws nearer, we'll see more activity at both the state and the federal level to ensure that some of those targets are reached. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Mora? Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mora, just preparatory to my question, did you have a chance to look at the email that we all received, which I think staff was copied on today from San Carlos Green?
I did.
And I just was wondering, the gen, my general summary of that is that they were pointing out some deficiencies in the report and some disagreements, I would characterize them as, in some of the scoring that was done.
Right.
I'd just be interested in your perspective on that.
I guess I have a couple of thoughts. One is that the original intent, at least at the staff level, for this particular report was to do a report at a very high level. I know some of the comments in the San Carlos Green letter talked about a lot of the sub-measures, and I think one of the things to talk about tonight, because this is obviously the first of these reports, is the level of detail that the council's looking for. The staff certainly can go deeper into the report and get into more of a reporting, not only by item, by sub-item, if you'd like. I think the other comment that I would have, and again, I think it gets down to a question of presentation and also a question of scoring, as you will, is that I think in some instances, when measures are substantially or fully completed, I suppose there's always an argument for many of these that further work could be done. And so I'm not sure that, you know, as we look at this, perhaps as we prepare for next year's report, there may be interest in continuing to pursue some items even if they've already been implemented, such as the changes we made through the zoning ordinance in the general plan. Or it may be there's a desire to create whole new measures or some combination thereof. So I think it's a, it's a good starting point for a discussion.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I have one speaker card, Suzanne Emerson.
Good evening, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos. On behalf of San Carlos Green, I was the chair of the subcommittee that prepared the climate action plan. The climate action plan was adopted as part of the environmental impact report for the general plan, with the greenhouse gas emission reductions serving as mitigation for the increased density. If the elements are not adopted and implemented in a timely manner, then, and, and continued on, the city will not end up achieving the mitigation that's called for in the environmental impact report. We commend the city for the actions that have been taken to date in implementing the climate action plan. Many items that required adoption of certain codes and ordinances what, and whatnot, those have been taken care of, and we're happy to see that. However, by not addressing many of the specific measures in the climate action plan, the scorecard omits the information necessary to evaluate compliance. By stating done for processes that are partially completed or necessarily continuing measures, the scorecard may present an overly positive view of the implementation status. So we request the details of implementation of the specific cap and climate action plan elements be provided. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Emerson. Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Mora, for your report. Moving on to Item eight A is.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Do we, do we get to comment on what our expectations are for the future?
Whatever you'd like. I didn't hear anybody say anything. I had questions.
I know, I was a little bit slow on the uptake when you said, any questions?
Sorry, okay.
No, nothing, to be sorry. I don't, no questions, but I just, I would like to comment that I like the idea that Mr. Mora presented of combining this with the annual green report. I think that would, that would make a lot of sense. And I would be interested, I know we're gonna be reworking the climate action plan in 2014, I would be interested in having it more specifically define how the reporting is to be expected, at what level of detail, because I think that's what's raised some of the questions, is that it wasn't a specific expectation identified. And I can see the value of doing a summary report, but I also think some of the details in the climate action plan have, have gotten lost in the, in the process of putting the scorecard together, and I'm, I'm concerned that there may be some things that would be of more value to the community if we were able to identify them as being in process. Done is a great word to use, but it, in process doesn't mean it's any less complete, it simply means it's something that we, as a community, are gonna pay attention to. So I would, I would hope that we would be able to incorporate that. And the last thing that I would like to comment on is that I would hope that all of our commissions who are identified in this scorecard, that in, as part of their next meetings, that under the, they always have a city council action item that's toward the end of their meetings, that all of the commission members be advised of the scorecard having been created, and they be given the information so they can look at it on the, on the, either in paper copy or on the, our website, so that they are aware of how their commission has been responsible and continues to be responsible for some of the future items, because I don't think that that's always clear to our commission members. Thank you.
Perhaps we could talk about, this item could be discussed at our retreat in August when we have our semi-annual meeting. That would be an item that we perhaps could talk about. Mr. Albert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of brief comments as well. One is that I'm not sure to what extent staff had reached out to and worked with San Carlos Green prior to preparing this, this particular report, but it might be something worth doing for the next go-around, just, just to touch base ahead of time, see if there's some opportunity to do some more communication and clarify some things. The other thing that, that I had noticed from the commentary that, that San Carlos Green had sent to us is that there, there was a class of observations that basically boiled down to, gee, how are we incorporating some of these principles into our decision-making when it comes to investments and projects and whatnot? Now, they're not gonna apply to all projects or all, all investments, but I thought that was kind of an interesting one in the sense that if we're gonna adopt these as principles, we ought to indicate for our project approvals as they come forward, which ones apply, which ones don't, why they don't apply, or why, why they do, and where they stand on it. So I also, also offer that to staff as something to think about, whether we should incorporate that in our processes for bringing projects forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Didn't mean not to have you say them, I just didn't hear anybody.
We're not shy about speaking.
I guess not. That's good. Okay, so we'll move on to Item eight A, which is a study session, council study session on solid waste rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll switch gears a little bit here. All right. Council will recall that last year during the setting of the 2013 rates and in subsequent meetings, there was a desire to have a council study session prior to the discussions of the 2014 rates, which, as you know, come each October. So the idea was to kind of pull together a number of major themes that had council interest and bring them forward tonight to hear some comments from you, and then try to see if there were some things that we could fold into the upcoming rate process. So just to refresh rate setting in general, the calendar and the process looks something like this. The recology compensation application comes in each June, and that document has just been received recently. In September, the SBWMA Board of Directors, under the terms of the franchise, is required to calculate and set what's known as the revenue requirement for the year ahead. And once that number is set, then each of the twelve-member agencies, the governing boards are charged with creating rates that will raise a sufficient amount of money to cover the revenue requirement. Typically, that discussion happens in the first meeting in October. There's a Prop two eighteen notice which is sent out, and then the rates are adopted at the council's meeting in December. Give you an example of the elements that will be coming up in the 2014 annual rates later this year. The rates are basically a sum of three different numbers, an estimate of the co, the revenue needed for the services in the coming year, 2014. Second, the estimated costs of those services during the year 2013, comparing the revenue brought in versus the actual cost. And then in 2012, the final true-up, as it were, the actual costs plus interest. There's also a side calculation that occurs for what's called the schedule queue costs. These are unscheduled services, things like backyard delivery and one-off specialty items, and that is increased each year by a cost of looting factor outside of the rates.
Can you, I'm sorry, I missed that. The unscheduled services, again?
It is a, Councilor Grokut, it is, it's sort of specialty services, I guess you could call them, for specific customers. In other words, they, these are things not everyone subscribes to. So again, the backyard service is the one that jumps to mind, but there are a couple of others. And each year, when we bring the rates to you, we also bring the attachment queue to you, and it has a separate year-to-year adjustment factor. So. An example is taking a look at this year's rates. This year, the three factors, estimated cost, shortfall, and actual resulted in a total increase of eight-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars that needed to be raised through the 2013 rates. And the way that that was done, ultimately, we presented the council with, I believe, four or five rate options, and you selected a rate option of six to nine percent base rate increases plus one to two dollars per can per month for rate leveling. And that resulted in rates that this year will bring in just over eight million dollars. This is kind of an update on the rate process and also a brief discussion about the item we were talking about earlier. The initial figures that come in on this process start in April, and then one of the key factors is in June. When the initial numbers came in in April, both myself and the SBWMA finance manager noted that there was an error in terms of money that was supposed to be sitting in recology that was instead transferred to the city. So, and this all revolves around what's known as the allied balancing account, for some of you who may remember that. Essentially, in the previous franchise, allied waste had a system where cities could continue to roll over any shortfall between the cost of service and the rates, and they could do this over a ten-year period. And so some of the communities, or I shouldn't say some of them, pretty much, almost every community, in fact, had an amount owed to allied over that ten-year period. The San Carlos amount was just over half a million dollars in terms of rate shortfall. Some cities, it was as high as over three million dollars. When that rate shortfall came up, cities were given a choice of raising all the money in the 2011 rate year, or some of it in the 2011 rate year and some of it in the 2012 rate year. In San Carlos, the council decided to raise it all in the first year. When we went back this year and looked at the actuals for 2012, and the significance of that is when allied was paid back, they were paid back on a quarterly basis. So they were paid back one payment in 2011 and three in 2012, the final payment coming, I believe, in September of 2012. So during 2012, there was money coming in and out of that account. And when we looked at the final true-up of that account and the prior year, we noticed that not only was money being sent to the city rather than being kept at recology during 2012, but that that practice had even continued to 2013. So at that point, staff notified recology to stop the transfers from recology to the city, and also to calculate the amount of money that should be sitting at recology that was currently sitting in the city's deposit liability account. And in fact, the city manager has on his desk a request to make that transfer back to recology, and we put this in the council's last newsletter as an alert to you that that process was going on in administrative fashion. So let's talk about some of the issues, and I've not only captured in this set of issues the issues raised in your council report, but I've, I've had some additional issues requested subsequent to that. You'll see those with an asterisk, so, so some additional things to talk about. And again, after we go through these, be happy to answer any questions you have, and then obviously very interested in hearing the areas that the council has interest in, or perhaps those not so much. The first is the continuation of the discussion about bringing rates in line with actual costs. As you know, in last year, the council, for the first time, starting in this year's rates, started a process where over a ten-year period, you're going to change the rates so that they get a little closer to the actual cost of service. And as we note in the staff report, there's a number of reasons to do that. One is consistency with the sewer rates, where recently you eliminated those differentials in this year's rates. We also have some issues related to cart migration, revenues not covering service, and there's also some legal questions that the city attorney, Mr. Rubens, has raised about Prop two eighteen, and whether the city can properly charge certain rate categories more than the actual cost of service. And I guess the question really in this area, and again, since the rate report does not come up till October, you know, we can get some initial discussion tonight, but the question, I think, coming up for October is gonna be whether the council wishes to make another down payment towards eliminating that problem in the upcoming rates. And this is a table that sort of shows you some of the trends. You see the 2012 rates on the top, the 2013 rates on the bottom, and you can see the dilemma here. The actual cost of service is around forty to fifty dollars. We have some customers paying sixty-two and ninety-three dollars, far in excess of what it really costs for that service. Conversely, we have other customers at the two lower tiers who are paying anywhere from twenty-seven to fifty percent below the real cost. And again, there's, there's some issues and legal concerns there. Another issue that came up, or another question from the council was, is there a way to display the rates in different categories rather than one number? In other words, today, San Carlos, like most cities, charges one composite rate for solid waste services. It's based on the size of your garbage car, cart, and it covers all services. based on the size of your garbage cart, and it covers all services. However, in some communities, such as Hillsborough and San Francisco, being the two most recent examples, those communities actually, when a customer gets their bill, there's a series of charges. So you can see a baseline charge, a trash charge, a recycle charge, et cetera. And if I turn the page here, this is the example in San Francisco. Hillsborough is similar. What San Francisco does is they charge per dwelling unit, and essentially, there's a base charge of $5. There is a recycling charge of $2, a compost charge of $2, and then there's a trash, what they call a volume charge, based on the size of that black container. These aren't specific, numbers specific to San Carlos, but if there's council interest in this area, this is something that we could look at. In talking to recology, they had a slightly different suggestion, which I thought also had some merit, which was if the city's goal is to describe to the public all the different services they get for the $1 amount, they could also have some text at the bottom of the bill saying that this amount includes recycling, compost, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to breaking them all out. I think there was also some concern when we discussed this about if we move from the current one amount system to itemizing it, there may be some confusion among the public if suddenly, starting per se at next year's rate, suddenly there's a bunch of additional charges. There may be some concerns about, you know, how come you added all these charges? Itemized bills. Another interesting issue that came up recently in the recent report from the civil grand jury was the discussion about, in the city of San Mateo, they break out two line items. So in addition to solid waste costs, they also have line items for street sweeping and closing the landfill. And so there's a question there about, is that something that's of interest to San Carlos? Now, one of the things that's interesting when staff looked at this is that both in San Mateo and in San Carlos, there are, of course, other parts of the bill that are not itemized in San Mateo. So if you were going to head down this road, one question is, do you just want to itemize things like street sweeping, landfill, or would you also like to itemize all of the charges that we include in the bill, things like franchise fees, door-to-door household waste, AB 939 costs, staffing, that sort of thing? And I guess under questions, I also made the observation that if you were to do both the previous item, where you itemize the different components of the rate, and this item, where you itemize all of the city components, each bill could be rather long each month. So that's also something to think about. And then here's an example of San Carlos' charges that could appear on an itemized bill. The three that are asterisked are the ones at San Mateo specifically earmarks. The other four are the ones that they charge and we charge, but they are, for whatever reason, not itemizing. So again, something to think about. Area four has to do with lifeline and discount rates. The council, both during the garbage rate discussions and during more recently the sewer rate discussions, asked about, is this something the city could do? We did some homework, and we found out that certainly some of the privately-owned utilities, such as PG&E and California Water, offer lifeline and discount rates. They're based on household income levels. And we also found, in two cases, examples of cities in this county who have recology service who also have programs like that, namely Pacifica and San Bruno. Some of the questions that we came up with as we explored this are, you know, we don't really have household income data per se for San Carlos, so there's no way of really knowing how many accounts would be covered under such a system if the council decided to pursue that. Just as kind of a estimate, what we did is we assumed that if the same number of people in San Carlos took the discount as in Pacifica, roughly 500, the cost of such a program would be on the order of $19,000 a year. Although, as you see in the staff report, there's some discussion, again, with the city attorney about, is it allowable under Prop 218 for the city to have the rate payers pay for these programs, as is typical with a private utility, or would the city have to come out of pocket in the general fund to fund such a program? And then there's also, I think, another policy question about, since these programs typically are aimed at either the two lowest services, either 20 or 20 and 32, does it make sense to add a discount on top of two rate categories that already have a discount of anywhere from 20 to 50% over the real cost of service? And here's an example, again, just to, you know, have a discussion about one program, is how Pacifica does it. They offer a 15% discount for customers who have one 20-gallon cart only. They do not offer any, what they call enhancements or extras to those accounts. If somebody wants additional services, then they have to go to a non-lifeline rate. They use the PG&E care program, which we've put in your packet, as the criteria, and they do that in part to have the program be, you know, easier to administer. And people can qualify simply by bringing in one or mailing in one of their PG&E bills that shows they're in the care program, and that's it. There's no additional paperwork or things to fill out. And as I indicate, there's about 3.7% of the Pacifica customers that are on that plan. Additional resources. There's been some discussion about desire perhaps to have more educational outreach, more studies, et cetera. And in looking at the other cities, what we find is in several of them, they're doing a much higher level of outreach, study, et cetera, but they're also funding those through their garbage rates. For example, in a couple agencies, such as Millbrae, the county, and San Mateo, there's actually one to three full-time staff on top of any administrative oversight, and that's something, in theory, that could be done here. Now we get into what I call the other items, the ones with the asterisk, as it were. The first one were some questions around, can you put some or all of a property, of a garbage bill on the property tax roll? And the answer is, yes, you can. And in fact, Hillsborough is doing that now for the baseline charges, the 25 bucks a month. My understanding is that component is on the property tax bill, and then the rest of the bill is sent out every quarter. So there are variations on that theme. There was also a question about, for people who I presume are in a lifeline category, could you put those costs on the property as a lien as opposed to on the property tax bill? And again, in talking to staff and city attorney, we believe that's possible. And the approach that we are imagining, again, this is all conceptual, that you would use if the city went in that direction, is you might handle it very similar to an assessment, very much like what we did with the Pulgas Creek Drainageистic, for example. And the way that works typically is you hire a third-party firm. They are the ones responsible for all the paperwork and qualifying folks, et cetera. They handle the accounting in terms of tracking the amount that is owed. After a couple of years, when the amount accumulates to the point where it's cost-effective to put a lien on the home, you do that. And then as part of the process, the cost of the firm that's handling the assessment, or in this case, the collection, adds a small fee each year to the billing. I think it's something like $15 or something. The questions here, again, come down to, similar to the earlier discussion about lifeline or discounts, who funds the cost of the program? Is it through the rate base, or is it the general fund? On this program, again, if you assume that there were 500 customers, 20-gallon service, and the entire amount was deferred, that could be as much as $125,000 a year in terms of a program cost. Number seven had to do with, we've had several questions about changing service levels for these services. One thing that I think we talked about during the Green Report, and I wanted to mention again, is that San Carlos is continuing to work with Rethink Waste and the county and the state on a pilot for what's called Every Other Week, or EOW service, as they call it. And the idea here would be that you would take a route, and you would offer either some customers, or perhaps even all customers, the ability to get garbage service on Every Other Week, and that could potentially reduce the number of what they call route hours to serve San Carlos. The stumbling block that we've had to date on this pilot has been that the county is unwilling, as the agent of the state and the state Cal Recycle, to approve such a program, even though these programs do exist in other states. And their concern is one of sanitary concerns and cleanliness, et cetera. In terms of changing service levels, staff believes that recycling is probably the one that's the most likely, if the city were to have interest in that or to change. We used to have Every Other Week. You could go back to that. In terms of the green cart, that would be difficult to go to Every Other Week unless you remove the food scraps and the food composting, because again, the state and the county have concerns about sanitary if the two are intermixed. However, if it went back to just yard clippings, that's a possibility. In terms of saving estimates, we've talked to recology, and they've indicated that if we had some form of Every Other Week, or bi-weekly service, or whatever, that the city customers might see as much as a 5% to 10% savings on their rates. Apparently, many of the costs that are included in the rates, such as the new trucks for the current services and other things, are fixed costs that are being amortized over the 10-year length of the franchise. So you would get some savings, but perhaps not as much as some might like to see. Some other thoughts. Obviously, we would need to do some public education and outreach if the service frequency were to be changed. And I know in hearing from some residents after we had our 2013 hearings, and talking about, there were some people who were concerned about the notion of trading lower rates for less service. In particular, they said, I want less rates, but I also don't want to give up any weekly service. So I think there would have to be some outreach happening there. And then a final thought in this area is that prior to these enhanced services, food scraps, weekly recycling, et cetera, it's important to note that San Carlos was not in compliance with AB 939. We were just under the 50% threshold. And after these services came in, we went all the way up to 72%. The question really comes to, if you took away some or all these services, would the numbers start to come down again? And that also is going to be a bigger problem, not so much right now, but as you get closer to 2020, when AB 341 kicks in. At that point, all cities in California are supposed to be at a 75% diversion rate for not only residential, but also multifamily and commercial. So we are pretty close to that for single-family. We are not close to that for the other two. So that, I think, is going to, could be a challenge. And then another one was a discussion about mixed carts and new trucks. Could you change the method of pickup? So instead of having a single stream, could you have, for example, one of the systems we've seen in other communities, what they call carts with dividers, where you have garbage on one side and recycling on another? And I think the idea here is then you wouldn't have three trucks going through each area. You might have perhaps two or something like that. This item actually was discussed during the 2006-07 preparation of the RFP, and I guess it was fair to say that there really wasn't any interest across the board in terms of residents, the agencies, and even the service providers. This system has been used in the past, but no one really seemed to have a lot of interest in doing that versus single stream. Everybody, at least at the time, wanted to see single stream. Some of the thoughts. Obviously, if you did mixed service only in San Carlos and not in the other cities, or even if you did it in the other cities, there'd be a need for recology to get trucks that would be, you know, suited for this purpose. You know, what we did in 2009, when San Carlos went two years early on the food scraps, is actually we worked with Allied Waste to have them rent used trucks to keep the cost down. And even with the used trucks, I think the additional cost to the customers was something like $2.66 per month per customer. So there's a cost to do this, and since you're still paying off the new trucks over the 10 years, the question of the hour really is, there could be fewer rate hours, but on the other hand, you then have to pay for the second fleet of trucks. So I'm not sure the net, you know, if there's a savings there. I'm sure there are other items, but at this point, I think I'll stop and see if there's any questions, and then we'll open it up to council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Questions for Mr. Mora?
I have one, something that wasn't hit on, and that is, one of the things I've noticed in the downtown area, where there's a lot of smaller apartment complexes that are, I don't know how many units, but they're probably, like on Walnut Street, for instance, there's a, between Holly and Magnolia, and there's a number of buildings there. There's probably, I don't know, 20 units in a building at most. And a lot of those have, instead of having a large bin
Right.
that all the residences use, all the residents use, each unit has its own, just like a single-family. They, and you see some of these buildings, they've got, you know, they try to find someplace to put these things, and they've got like, you know, 20 cans of each kind of can.
Right.
It takes up a lot of space, looks really inefficient. And I noticed in one, in fact, the building I used to live in, when I first moved to San Carlos, I walked by it all the time with my dog, and you go out, if you're out there on the morning that garbage pickup is going to be done, they put all these cans between the sidewalk and the curb, and they have a gravel area. Instead of having landscaping, it's just all pea gravel. And they have all the cans right there. I don't even know how recology picks them up, because they're not following, you know, the course that residents have to take to put your cans along the curb and also so many feet apart, which I want to hit on that, too. But to the first question.
I'll comment, and then again, since we have some folks from recology here, they may want to comment as well. San Carlos is actually one of several cities that's in a multifamily residential pilot. And one of the things that we're trying to understand in that project is, I think, some of the questions Councilmember Grokot is raising, which is, how do you get more efficient garbage collection, and also how do you get increased recycling? And in my meetings that I've been at, some of the concerns and issues are both educating the tenants, but also sometimes working with the property manager and the property owner. There isn't always, I guess, to use an expression, all the stars aren't always lined up. So it's a challenging area. In some cases, my understanding is it takes them months, if not years, to make progress on those sorts of complexes, and that might explain why. In those complexes, I believe the recycling rate is something in the 30% range rather than the single-family 72. I don't know if Tammy or Gino, or Mario, or anybody wants to add on to that.
Mr. Mora? How does that address, though, my question of, are you saying they're looking at how to do those types of buildings, and then they're looking at possibly getting those owners to go to some type of large container?
In some cases, yes.
That's being looked at?
Yes.
Okay.
Mario Puccinelli with recology and Councilmember Grokot. What, each of those, each multifamily dwelling has its own circumstances. In some multifamily dwellings, the property owner pays the fee for the service and dictates what type of service he would like to pay for, he or she would like to pay for. In other applications, there are, each tenant pays for his or her own service. And so it is a challenge, as Mr. Mora said, trying to get all the stars to align, to get all these folks on the same page. The third comment I'd like to make is that multifamily dwellings are commercial properties, so they have a different set of criteria as far as their setouts. They can put it within 50 feet from the curb, and we are required to pick it up.
So from what you're saying, could there be, what you're saying is it's a choice right now for the property owner. Could we, for the sake of efficiency and trying to bring down costs for everybody, and I don't know if it would, but I would think it would, because like I say, when you've got, you know, what I witness is all the cans for those buildings, you know, let's say there's, again, let's say it's a 15-unit building, there's 15, 15 black cans, 15 blue cans, usually there's no yard waste can, but just the recycling can, so the blue and the black are out there. I don't know what they do about the, some of these don't have much in the sense of yard waste anyways, because they have mow-and-blow guys come. And, but then that raises the question, since food waste is supposed to go in the yard waste container, that's impossible for those residences to do anything about food waste, because there's, you know, they just put it in the black can. And then the raccoons come around and tip those over and take the food out.
Right, right.
You laugh, but, and I understand, I would, too. But it, in my neighborhood, because I live in the downtown, that thing that I just mentioned about the raccoons coming around at night and tipping the cans over is a real problem. And it also becomes a health issue, because now you've got food waste in yards, on sidewalks, ends up in the gutter. It's a problem.
It's not only the raccoons. We're seeing the ravens now dig into the
Yes, that's right, the very large black birds.
Very large black birds. And, but to your point, the multifamily dwellings have to pay, and Tammy or Gino, correct me if I'm wrong, but multifamily dwellings have to subscribe to the organics program. Unlike the residential customers who, the cost for those services, or the organics is included in those costs, multifamily dwellings, or MFDs, have to subscribe and pay for that service.
I did not know that. Well, anyways, I see that as part of the dilemma here, and I don't know, you presented it as a choice for multifamily to either, I see what's going on now, is if you're going to charge, if you own a building and you want garbage to be included, you could, it's just like having, you know, 15 PG&E meters out in front of your building, right? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
But I suppose, I don't know, could we, as a city, say, no, we're not even going to give you that choice through our service that we're contracting with recology for? to give you that choice through our service that we're contracting with Recology for? We're not going to make that available. If you have a multifamily building, you're going to have a bin, and that's the way you're going to deal with it.
That's really-
And would that save money? I don't know.
Well, that's a policy decision for council and staff. However, at the end of the day, as we become more efficient, our route labor hours will decrease. And that, in turn, will decrease the allocation, the piece of the pie that is allocated each year to all 12 member agencies.
Right. But how does that, is the thing that I'm asking for, is that more efficient, less efficient?
It would be, absolutely. If we're out there servicing, now we have to send out two different types of truck. We have to send out a front-end loader and a rear-end loader. And then there's time constraints as well. Our front-end loaders are really commercial-type vehicles that start at 4:00. And obviously, with these, the mixing of residential and these, in these commercial sectors, we can't get out there at 4:00 AM. So we have to now go out with a different type of truck, deal with traffic, which takes us a little while longer to service these MFDs.
So I'm confused, then. Which, as a service provider, which would you prefer? Having the large bins?
I prefer the large bins.
The large bins in multifamily?
Large metal containers, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Mr. Rubens, can we legislate that?
That would require, I think, two actions. One is we'd have to change our code section to dealing with what is required, and then the franchise would probably have to be amended to add that service.
But it's theoretically doable. Okay. Just wanted, you know, it's possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Olbert? Yeah, questions? Discussion?
For now, I'm-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of questions here. Let me go through a few of them. Mr. Mora, actually, this first one may be for Mr. Rubens. The staff report, after I read it, I was left a little bit of a lack of clarity on Prop 218 and how it applies specifically to the issue of, that you pointed out, of any kind of subsidy, basically-
Right.
-that ratepayers are paying. There are places in here, when I read it, it seems to me to be pretty clear that we can't do, or we have an exposure with what we are currently doing. And I just appreciate some elucidation.
Well, I think this is, it has to do with Prop 218's proportionality and cost-of-service language. And it's, we just have to be careful in the way we allocate the costs that we're complying with 218. And specifically, the concern that we've had, that Mr. Mora's been mentioning, is that as we, as we implemented the new franchise, we started to see the cart migration, which resulted in increasing the differential between the 20-gallon and the larger sizes. And there's a disproportionate issue there regarding the cost of providing service with the larger bins versus the smaller bins. So that's one of the things that, going forward, we're recommending that we look at. And, you know, there are arguments in favor of that, but my research indicates that that's something you want to try and stay away from.
Are there any examples of challenges, either successful or not, to this kind of structure?
Well, there are many successful challenges to 218, but each case will be fact-specific. So I can't really tell you tonight whether there's been something that's on all fours with this scenario. I have not found that.
Mr. Mora, when we were talking about cross-subsidy of costs, or cost subsidization, you and I had had some discussions last fall. My recollection is that we're, your comments were mostly directed at, and we tend to focus on, the subsidies between the different cart sizes in the residential sector.
Correct.
That there is also some degree of subsidy between the commercial and the residential sector as well.
That's correct.
And as I recall, that's a, potentially a fairly significant number as well.
That's correct.
Okay. I just mentioned that, because I'm not sure how many of my colleagues are aware of that. That's something else we may need to be thinking about or having staff look into a little bit more. I appreciate you incorporating some of those last-minute suggestions in here. One question I did have about something I don't think made it in here, at least I don't recall seeing it in the staff report, and that's the idea of single-family homes sharing, like neighbors sharing service. Is that even possible? Does anybody do something like that?
I guess one of the issues there, again, I think it would go back to our ordinance, we'd have to change it, because right now, we require each residential customer and each commercial customer to have their own service. So that would be one piece of the puzzle. I guess the other question, as I've talked a bit about that to Recology and SBWMA, is the question of how much would that actually save unless it was something that was regimented and was, you know, routine? In other words, if one day you had so many fewer hours and the next day you had more, it would be hard, perhaps, to capture any significant savings. And again, most of our, my work has been aimed more at the every-other-week, which is more of a structured program, which seems to me that either on individual residents or maybe even in neighborhoods, you could, if you could systemize, excuse me, systemize that less-frequent garbage service, you could clearly gain some savings. Although, part of the challenge in all of these scenarios, when you're changing service levels, I indicated earlier, is that because you're still amortizing a lot of the trucks and other things that came online in 2011, you can't really get away from that until, you know, the end of the franchise in 2020. So there could be some savings, but again, you know, we're talking 5% to 10%, perhaps.
Well, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because one of the observations I was going to make is, as I recall from my analysis and study last fall, it's complicated by the fact that that allocation takes place amongst all of the member agencies.
That's true as well.
And so one could imagine a situation where every agency adopted the same change to their ordinances and practices, everybody reduced their frequency by the same amount, and costs didn't change at all.
That could happen, yes.
On the other hand, if, the flip side of that is, if one agency is out ahead of others, they probably will see a fairly significant cost reduction, at least until such time as other people wake up and say, oh, okay, we should, or I should say, we won't say significant, more significant than you might think, than my first thing.
I guess my thought is that, you know, since we have been the, sort of, headquarters of pilots, it would not be unusual for us to do in every-other-week or something along those lines. And we might indeed capture that mythical 10% in the short term. But you're right, if everybody else came online behind us and a couple of years later, some of that might evaporate.
And the only time that then the saving would be ultimately realized is at the end of the contract, where essentially, we could potentially have it rebid to reflect the lower need for equipment and route hours and whatnot.
Correct.
But that's not, you know, that'll affect rates out in 2018 at the earliest, or 2020.
Yeah. And again, I don't know enough about the fleet at either South Bay Recycling or Recology to know if they could be lasting longer than 10 years. But that's, particularly if we did a renewal for one or both of them, that would be the sort of discussion presumably we'd have.
Last question I had was, you made some comment when you were talking about the prior work that had been done in the area of looking at mixed carts.
Yes.
And you talked about the strong preference that customers, in fact, all the interest groups had for a single-stream-
Yes.
...service. I just want to clarify something there, make sure I understand. Just using myself as an example, I love the adoption of the single-stream service, because I hated having to separate my recycling into different categories in the rain and all that kind of stuff. On the other hand, I wouldn't care if you gave me one larger-than-normal-sized can, and one side of it was garbage and one side of it was recycling, as long as I could put all of my recycling in the one side.
Right.
So when you say there was a preference for single-stream, is it really the single-stream or is it the single can? Because your comments implied it was a single can, or a non-shared can.
Well, again, I think part of it may have been because people were, we had discussed prior to the decision by the 12 governing bodies as to which way to go, that single-stream was a possibility, and a lot of people, I think, were excited about getting it and were anxious to do it. And part of it had to do with, and again, I'll defer to either, you know, Marshall at SB or perhaps the Recology folks, is to explain the whys. But there have been in the past agencies that have had what I would call, for lack of a better term, a divider can, where literally, it's like a piece of, I don't know, metal or whatever it is down the middle, and that's how you do it. And those seem to be losing favor. I don't know if that's a fair statement, or you guys would like to take a shot at that?
Well, I just want to share with you my own personal experience. I live in South San Francisco, and I have the split cart that you're referencing. And I probably shouldn't be saying this, but I end up bringing some recyclables to work, because my family of three, we cannot fill, well, we overfill our paper side, our fiber side of the cart. Our glass and bottles is probably a quarter full, but we run out of room, very simply put.
Fair enough.
Gino Gas, Brittany, Recology, San Mateo County. Also, operationally, and I personally worked on those trucks as well, in a perfect world, the containers, as Mario pointed out, not all the time happen, but in a perfect world, you want those sides to be filled up perfectly, so the trucks would fill up at the same time. Oftentimes, you'll be in a specific area where maybe recycling is overwhelmingly done in that neighborhood, you'll have one side of your truck filled up way before the other side, leaving that garbage inefficiently picked up. You'll have to either continue on just picking up garbage and then have to recreate the wheel again to come back and get the recycling. So in our industry, my personal opinion, it's not an efficient way to pick up material. Thank you.
Questions, comments on this side?
Yes, please. So apparently, in this county, we can't choose some, a schedule other than weekly for picking up the garbage and the compost.
Right.
But is it possible to provide information in the, either through the bills or through some other mechanism, to let people know that a portion of what their future rates will be is made up of how much they, and how regularly they put the cans out to be picked up? I think we talked about this the last time, that if the trucks don't have to stop at every single house and they're able to go do the route more quickly, it ends up costing us less. Is that?
Again, we've had some discussions about that with SB and Recology, and theoretically, that sounds right. I guess it's kind of like the every-other-week or some of these other scenarios. I think until you really test it or try it, you won't know.
Okay. So you're saying it's untested? We don't, that's not actual and correct?
Right. Well, let's put it this way, I mean, I've heard counsel, interest from a couple of council members about that concept. In the research I've done for this report, I have yet to find any city who's tried that. So intuitively, it sounds right. It'd be an interesting experiment to try here in San Carlos, since we do the pilots. But I think until we try it, hard to say.
Okay. I just didn't know if that would be acceptable and still meet the letter of the law, to let people make up their own decision as to how frequently they needed to put-
Yeah. I guess my sense on that part of it is, I'm not sure what the state acting through the county could, I don't know, for lack of a better term, do about it if our residents put out material in that fashion. But, you know, again, up until now, there's been a lot of pushback that I've gotten from those two groups about any sort of non-weekly garbage pickup. Although, at the risk of sounding stubborn, I haven't given up yet.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, at what point do you want us to comment on what we're interested in terms of the direction for staff?
Why don't we wait on that and get some questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions, Mr. Collins?
I do, just a couple. I was looking at these different options that different cities have tried, and Pacifica utilizes that 15% discount on the single cart. So they just don't put out a blue cart, or they don't have one? How does that work?
Well, no, this is keyed to the garbage service. They still have a composite rate like we do. But what they say in Pacifica, and I actually talked to their general manager, in fact, about this last week, is that it really is what they call a lifeline rate. That is, you get one 20-gallon cart, you get no bonus services, it's strictly the minimum needed. If you need a bigger cart or you want extras, you don't get that rate. And then when it comes to the qualifying for it, I think they've taken a very, in my opinion, creative approach. And that is, rather than, for example, having the unique income standards, as occurs apparently in San Francisco, for example, they basically say, you show me that you're in the PG&E Care Program, and you show me one of your bills, and you're in. There's no application to fill out, there's no paperwork, there's no certification, there's no, give me your tax returns or any of that. And I thought, that's a pretty clever way of doing it.
So are they putting their recyclables in the same 20-gallon?
No, I believe they still have recycling service and compost service. But the, again, like in our case, the rate they're paying is keyed off of the size of the garbage container.
Oh, all right, all right. And then the other question was, I noticed that in some of these options here, you talked about lifeline discount rates, and that there was this, there could be this $19,000 additional cost and how to spread it. And my question is, you mentioned that there may be a need for an election to, in order to deal with this. It said, there may also be a need for an election or a special tax to support the program?
I think, again, that gets more into Mr. Rubens's area, perhaps, in terms of, and just to make a quick comment before I turn over to Greg. One of the interesting things about these lifeline and discount rates, you see them less and less among cities that set utility rates, and you see them more and more. And I think one of the reasons is that privately-owned utilities and private companies that set rates are outside of Prop 218. So they don't have some of these issues that we're trying to navigate. Whereas here, there's a real question about, can you really put those costs back into the rate base as a private utility would do?
Yeah, that's the main issue, is the cost of the program to create a, what amounts to a subsidy for a different category of customer. That's not something that can be spread out among the general ratepayers, because they're not getting the benefit from, or that cost of service. It's not fair to assess that, the cost of that program against all the other ratepayers. It marginally will add something to their rates. So the reason the election comes in is the council would have two choices under that scenario. One is to simply fund the discounting program out of the general fund. The other, if you did not want to do that, would be to hold an election and for a special tax to fund the program.
Right.
And the tax might be, you know, who knows what it would be at that level, but that's how you do it.
Okay. Well, where I was going with all this is, if you did take that move, what are we looking at in the cost of a special election? My question is, if, which I think is a rather extreme move, but you almost, I mean, if you had a special election, what would the cost of the special election be? I mean, wouldn't that just, it seems like it would just add more agony?
Yeah, it could be, sure, that would be an additional cost, and the, the cost would depend on whether you held it on a standalone or a mail-in ballot or as part of a general municipal election. Special election like that is a two-thirds vote of the public. The council puts it on the ballot. And, yeah, I suppose the other, there's one other option, I suppose, is to, which I don't recommend, but the other option is to try and work, I mean, to develop a program and see if it's something that goes up to the level of people wanting to protest it. But the problem with that is, if you do that, you expose yourselves to potential attorney's fees if someone does decide to attack and is successful, of course.
Thank you.
Sure. I just had a couple of quick questions. Relative to Mr. Olbert's question about whether people could, like neighbors could band together, you know? Have you ever heard of that? I've never heard of it.
I wasn't able to find an example.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds interesting.
I mean, I'm saying it's wrong, I'm just, I've never heard of it. The other thing is, you know, if you, you're talking about these rates, you know, back on your, I guess, page four of your, of your report, and it's, you know, that shows the 20-gallon is, rate versus cost is below the amount, the 32-gallon is below, 64-gallon is above, and so on and so on. If we equalize the, if we, if we wanted to sort of make the 64 and 96 zeros, okay, in other words, 0% or 0 above-
Right.
That, to me, that pushes the cost down to the other two. Is that correct?
Well, I think what would happen, and again, the part of this, too, is a question of how fast you phase it in. I think when we talked to you last year, we talked about if you did the $1, $2 thing, and then credited it back, that would even them out over about 10 years.
But it does push it down to the other, because there's a fixed amount of money that has to get paid.
True.
Somebody's got to pay it. So if the 64 and the 96 don't pay it, the 20 and 32 are going to pay it.
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, it's almost like when we, I remember, I think, when we had the water crisis a number of years ago, and everybody was trying to conserve, and then the water company said, we've got to raise our rates to cover these, you know, and all of a sudden, it's like, well, it doesn't fit, it doesn't make any, you know, it doesn't fit. And so in a way, you know, you say, well, we'll cut down on our garbage, we'll do a 20-gallon can, but now you're going to pay more.
Well, I think- Well, I think there's two things there, and we talked a little bit about this in the past. One is that, for years, cities, not just this city, but many cities, had these significant differences between the categories on the theory that people would rush down to the lower cart because of the cost. And what we saw in San Carlos is up till 2009, that really didn't happen much, that we were still under 50%, we were still under a state good faith that letter, we just weren't moving the needle. And then, we brought in food scraps and weekly recycling and all that, then it just went off the chart, so.
I'm just doing the math here, I'm not talking about society, I'm just talking the math. It's got to get pushed somewhere. And like you said, over a 10-year period, you could theoretically, you know, make those equal.
Right.
But it's still going to be pushed down to the lower cans. It has to be. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? What, you have more questions? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I thought you had something.
Follow-up.
Your discussion with Mayor Grisilli, Mr. Moore prompted me to ask this next one. Are there any communities that essentially charge something close to a flat rate? I mean, if you look at the 2013 costs, the difference between the bottom and the top, even on the cost, is $8 a month.
Do you mean, as in, they charge all the customers the same amount?
Yes.
East Palo Alto. Everybody has 96-gallon container, and they pay the same amount, although ironically, even in that city, the 96-gallon doesn't cover its cost. It's being subsidized by the business customers, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grocott, you had a couple of the credits?
Yeah, I did. The changes to the billing that you were talking about, if we were to do the breakdowns and do all that kind of stuff, I'd hate to ask for that to be done, for us to discuss that, you know, this is a study session, but let's say we gave staff, we want to go that direction, and then we find out, when it comes time to actually implement it, if we chose to do that, that, oh, by the way, you're going to have, for the next three years, a, some kind of fee to cover the change to the billing.
Well, I did have some discussions with Recology about options, and it turns out that there are actually quite a few lines on that bill format, so we could do it. To Councilmember Grocott's point, there is actually language in the franchise that says if the city takes actions, I'm paraphrasing here, but something to the effect of, if the city takes actions that increase Recology's costs by more than 2%, they can come back.
In our contract, that's right.
But, I think that something like this is probably, and again, I'll, you know, they may want to comment as well, I don't believe that would trigger that 2% threshold, it's my opinion.
So, we wouldn't see an increase in cost?
I don't think so.
Okay, just wanted to know, before we discuss that one. And then, I had a couple of questions about street sweeping. One, when we were meeting in, Mr. Olbert and I, and the city manager and so forth, on parking issues, Parking Subcommittee, that's one of the things that was discussed a little bit, was having days where there's no parking allowed on the streets, so the street sweepers can come through. So, is that something that, you know, Recology handles that for us? Is that something that they would prefer to see, or do they much care, or what?
I know there are cities that have those policies and have signs to that effect. I guess the bigger question would be, you know, to the extent that that would be enforceable, and what kind of resources that would take from the sheriff's operation. But we could certainly, if that's an interest area for council, we could explore it.
How often would we be doing something like that? How often do we go out with the trucks and the street sweeping trucks?
How could you?
Well, the question is.
About no parking on days when the garbage pickup, or the street sweeper comes.
Yeah, specific.
We don't do this?
They don't do this. Yeah, right, maybe Jay could handle that, since we have a contract.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Councilmember Grocott, in response to that question, we sweep different frequencies in different parts of the city. Typically, the uphill neighborhoods, it's once a month. In the flat neighborhoods, residential-wise, it's twice a month. Down the commercial area downtown, it's once a week. So we have some different times that we sweep. The issue becomes resources, and it's not only law enforcement, but it's also engaging the services of tow companies, who would actually come along and do the physical removal of vehicles so we could sweep. So, there, my experience tells me that, in a city such as Santa Barbara, where they did this, it was a huge adjustment, and it created a really large public outcry over the whole idea that they changed from a virtually no enforcement to a complete enforcement, and your vehicle's towed if you're out there during those times. So it's a dramatic change, and it would require a lot of resources and a very dedicated effort to make it work.
Okay. And then, the last question I had about street sweeping is, and I've brought this up before, so it's no big surprise, but, you know, I'm of the opinion it shouldn't be on these bills, because there's a lot of people who get garbage service, but they don't have a curb in front of their house. So, there's no way that they do street sweeping, so you're forcing somebody to pay for a service that they're not getting. And it was curious to me, because I've been given the argument before, that that's allowed, but I've just, if I followed the conversation that Mr. Rubens had through Mr. Olbert's question, was, in order to subsidize the lifeline rates, we'd have to put that to an election. But we're, it seems like a similar issue to me, that we're, there's people who are subsidizing street sweeping for, and they're not getting it.
I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, for example, you could make the same argument about a pothole. You know, if the potholes in front of your house, should it be the responsibility of just the homeowners who have the pothole in front of their house to make the repair? The streets really are a public asset, they belong to everybody, so regardless of whether or not the garbage happens to be in front of your house that's being swept up, the streets themselves throughout the community are the responsibility of everyone in the community to maintain. So they put their tax dollars evenly throughout the city, and it's really the same notion with the street sweeping.
Yeah, I understand that, but I also understand that potholes are paid for with general taxes, which go into the general fund, and then the general fund pays for the pothole, or sometimes grant money, money from car tax and so forth. I understand all that. In this case, you're talking about a fee that's paid for, for service, for garbage, or, in this case, the one I'm asking about, is you're paying a fee for street sweeping, but you're not picking up, and fees and taxes are different, so.
Okay. Mr. Collins, you had something to Mr. Olbert?
I did. This might be a question for Mr. Walter. Back to the street sweeping. It seems like you opened a can of worms here, but.
I'm going to close pretty soon. Go ahead.
Good. On the street sweeping, do you sweep my street like the same day of the month, or the same two days on the month? Is it like every other Wednesday, or once, you know, every, the first Thursday of every month? Is there a particular day?
Yes. So, the streets are all set up that way, and that's kind of one of the only ways that you can get around to all of them. So it's very predictable. Particular streets would be the fourth Wednesday, or something like, the second and fourth Wednesday, or something like that.
And I could actually just call and find out what day you street my street.
You could actually look on the city website.
I can look on the city website. Okay, because I was thinking it'd be helpful if all of us knew. I have a, my daughter lives in the city, but her car lives at our house, so it's always parked on the street. If I know what day that is, I'll move it in anticipation of the street sweeping coming by, so that, you know, that area in front of my house will be, will be open. Although, I will tell you that sometimes when I move the car, someone else parks there. So, which, I mean, that's my problem, I'll deal with it. But, I'm thinking along the lines of, you know, towns have this, they do put up signs that say, "Street sweeping on a certain day." I'm wondering if it may be a one-time expense of putting up the signs that simply indicate when street sweeping days are. Forget the fines and the enforcement and all that, I think that's sort of another can of worms that the city would have to deal with. But I think it might be valuable for the public to know when those days are. It would encourage people to move their cars. Certainly, you're going to have a few people here and there, but that would also notify other, everybody else, that that street is going to be swept on that particular day, and that's why there's no cars there. It's a thought.
Mr. Olbert, you had one more thing before we get to public comment, and then trying to figure out what we're going to do?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do you a favor, I don't have any other questions.
This question?
Sure, sure.
Yes. Mr. Moore, going back to the San Francisco example that you were showing us, that had a base service charge, and then a recycling charge and a compost charge. So, the recycling charge is in itself, in this example, of $2, it's sort of like a baseline charge?
Yeah.
Just tied to, okay. Have you heard of any situations where the recycling or a compost charge would be based on the number of those types of receptacles that the account is currently using? So if they were using three recycling bins, it would be $6 in this example?
As a matter of fact, there are some cities in our SBW area that do exactly that, although it's not so much the recycling cart, it's actually the green waste cart. So, for example, in Atherton and Hillsborough, they do, in fact, do exactly what Councilmember Clapper is describing. After the first one or two, I can't remember what it is, you get surcharge for each one. And the reason for that is, for example, in Atherton, when they did their first rate review after the 2011 services, a lot of the increased costs were just in the green waste service. And Hillsborough has a similar situation. So you certainly could do that. I'm not aware that that particular issue is as serious in San Carlos as it is in those two communities. The other thing is, this is just done as a way, by illustration, I have no idea if staff work with Recology and SBW, what the item charges would be. But it is doable, and again, in our discussions, other than the work to actually calculate those, the only concern that I think I heard repeatedly was the notion of, if you move from one number on the bill to five or six the first year you implement it, you may indeed get, you know, some calls from residents and customers saying, you know, "What's up with all these new charges?"
Thank you.
Great, all right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Okay, just want.
Police fire guys are here.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, well, let me ask Mr. Rubens a question, because this is a study session, we're not vote, I mean, in theory, we're not voting on anything. So, let's assume that Councilwoman Clapper says, "Well gee, I think we've got to do this, this, and this." And we all look, and some of us nod, some of us don't. How is this going to actually work tonight? Because I'm concerned that, you know, we're not, this is not an item that we're voting on. So could you give us some guidance on that?
Yeah, the, on a study session, what staff is looking for is general direction, so that we can bring something back to you for consideration. So, by subject matter, if there's an idea or an issue that someone on the council would like to come back to the council as a formerly, formerly agendized item, that's what we're looking for.
Well, that's wonderful, but let's say one person would do that, and the other four of us are going away, for whatever reason, how are we going to?
You can take straw poll type of votes to direct us, to give us direction.
All right, well, I'm going to rely on your, on straw polling then, okay? Just to make sure, because again, we might all come up with five or six different items, might be 30 items. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, that's all, and do it legally.
You could do it, that's the way that we've done it in the past, having straw polls.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all, we're all doing it right. So, did folks want to bring up some things that perhaps we want to have staff study or look at?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we start it over here, Mr. Grocott, and we'll just keep going along?
Well, one of the things I would like to look at is, some different examples that we could chew on of these itemized bills. And really, what I'm looking for is something that would help us tighten up the rates a little bit, as you were talking about, you know, you got these that are being subsidized, and these that are paying more. But if there was something on there, at least, that, I wouldn't necessarily look for all these different compost charges and everything, because what that does is, you talk about cans of worms, people could call up and say, "Well, I don't do any co-posting, so why am I paying for that?"
Right.
But if you could have something that said, "Here's your base rate of some kind, you've got this base service charge, and then you've got a trash volume charge." Something that breaks it down in that sort of fashion is what I would be looking for. The other thing that I'm interested in is something to do with lifeline rates, we talked about that before, some way to protect people who are on fixed incomes. And I like the idea of tying it to PG&E. Another thought would be to tie it to, if a person's already enrolled in those programs, where, like when the schools pass their bond measures, not all of them have this feature, but some of them have the feature that if you call in every year, you can opt out of that showing up on your property tax bill. So that would be another measure to allow someone to opt into a lower rate, because obviously, if they're taking advantage of the bond thing, they're, you know, they're concerned about their income. And then, I don't think we can do it, you know, right away, but I would like to see the, us move towards a single stream, because, you know, one of the things that I see as an issue is, again, when all these cans are out on the street, and then you're supposed to space them so far apart, it's just not working. I see neighbors in my area getting notices, these little yellow cards, because their cans aren't spaced. Well, the reason they're not spaced is, they may have put them right away, but somebody came along, wanted to park their car, and they moved them. And then lastly, I would like to see some more information about multifamily, and could we, is there a way to get those down to one bin, or, you know, the, not, I don't know what they call those carts or something, the big containers? At least, let's look at that, would that save us money? Would it actually save the property owners money, as, you know, and the people that live in their building, as a composite? So, to look at that.
I think the way to do this, otherwise, we're going to be taking thousands of notes. If staff could just write down what Mr. Grocott said, and then we'll just, each one of us, and some may be the same, and some may be completely different, and then we can look at that. If they're the same, that's going to give you the straw poll right away, and if they're different, then we'll have to go back and look at those specific ones. Is that okay, Mr. Malkey? Or Mr. Moore?
That's great, in fact, I'm already doing that.
I figured you were, but I just thought it'd be a good idea.
Excellent.
Ms. Clapper?
Yes, okay, I'm going on down the five items on the analysis page. I definitely support bringing the cart rates in line with the actual costs, and I would like to see itemized, itemized rate components for recycling, compost, and baseline services. And I would like to see that by number of receptacles. And I would support the itemized billing, I think anything that increases the transparency to people in our community about what it is that's included in what they're paying for on a quarterly basis would be of great help. So I like the idea of the itemized bills. If there's some way to work out lifeline or discount rates, I would love to see that. I would prefer to see it tied to income and not to age. And I like the idea of including other costs, additional resources, staffing, and consultants that we incur on a regular basis, that we can justify as being tied to the solid waste service that we provide, including that as part of the rates.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I would support what Councilmember Clapper is saying, with the exception that I don't think we ought to get carried away on the itemization on the bills, along the lines of what Mr. Grocott said.
Okay, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just running down the list that I was making, I'm not actually particularly big on an itemized bill, but I wouldn't mind seeing some more disclosure when we send out our annual rate notices, to explain to people what's in the, in the costs. So that's an itemization of a different kind. The lifeline rates, I'd like to see some work done on that. Like Councilwoman Clapper said, for me, I'd like to tie that more to income, the type of PG&E program that, that staff was talking about, rather than just age. Consolidating the multifamily residential cans, I also think is something that we've got to look at, have staff spend some time on. I also frankly like to see a little bit of work done on, which sounds like it's already happening, on the every other week, see whether that can be pursued. And then lastly, I am somewhat concerned, and would like to be less concerned, about the Prop 18, 218 dimensions of all of this. So I would appreciate hearing back from Mr. Rubens, when he has completed his research, to kind of educate us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had forgotten that what Mr. Olbert mentioned, which is the every, every other week program, and I too thought that was.
Okay. You know, itemization, I think, is a great idea, but I'm very concerned that you get too itemized, and what's going to happen is, is it's going to, people are going to go, it's, we're going to have so much transparency, that we're going to be answering, all they're going to be doing instead of picking up garbage is answering questions. I wouldn't mind looking at the lifeline discount rates, but again, as Mr. Olbert said, I think that we need, I mean, pretty much, we need to know that 218 is, we're going to follow those directions, because that, that could be a real can of worms if we step out of the, out of the line of that. And of course, Mr. Collins mentioned, what does the, if we have to do a special election, what does that cost, and who pays for that? You know, like, and I think Mr. Grocott mentioned it first, and other folks have, I think, certainly, and again, I don't walk down those streets that you do.
No.
And I don't see it, even the ones up above, where I drive by, it seems they have bigger cans, or they just literally stop and go get the can and put it in the rear loader. loader. They don't have the individuals. But I think that's an excellent idea. I, I don't know whether that's, we can legally legislate that. But there's, I would go crazy if there's 20 cans in front of the thing. And I can't, can't believe that recology wouldn't just love it to have one can instead of 20 also. It's got to be more cost effective. Other than that, I don't think I have any other comments. Does staff have a pretty good idea of what we're, where we're going here?
Yeah, I think that's very helpful.
Okay. Mr. Puccinelli, do you have anything to say on, or nothing? Okay. Just wanted to make sure you have an opportunity. Okay. All right. So, we'll move on.
Well, actually...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think through the mayor, just, just to come back to a couple of items that I'm not sure we have a clear direction on, which would be Every Other Week service. Let's see, what else have we got here? Well, I think, I think that's actually the only one that it's not clear from the list about whether or not...
Okay. Well, two people mentioned it, I believe.
Right.
Okay. Someone else want to mention?
Yeah. I am also...
Okay. So, that's three.
...interested in that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody. And thank you, folks, for coming and spending your evening with us. If you'd like to stay, there's more.
But not, no more trash talking.
No, no more trash talking. All right. Okay. The next item on our agenda is 9A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We could have done this earlier, but I'm just wondering. I don't know how long it's going to take us to get through 9A. But we have a lot of firefighters sitting here waiting for the other item. Might we take these in opposite order?
Go 10A? Sure. Be happy to. No, we don't need a motion for that. I can move 10A up, can't I? Okay. Let's do, let's do 10A then. Consideration of adoption resolutions related to the execution amended restated agreement between the cities of Redwood City and San Carlos Fire Emergency Services. Thank you, Mr. Grocott.
Mr. Mayor, would you like us to get started now or wait for?
Yeah, we should probably wait for Mr. Olbert.
Counselor over, maybe realized we were about to...
Yeah, to come back in. So, we'll have a musical interlude. Or maybe not a musical interlude.
We could ask the city attorney to hum into the mic.
To turn on our radios.
Not so good at that.
I just want to make sure.
Resolutions.
Yeah.
9A is a second hearing, right?
Right. Second hearing. Right.
I thought I'd make sure he wasn't standing outside talking, and he was against to someone, because then I'd be dragging him.
10A. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff Malpey, city manager. I'd just like to start this item by giving you a brief update, making a few comments and remarks. This evening, as you may have noticed, and folks in the audience and at home may have noticed, some of the staff members weren't present, myself included, at the beginning of this council meeting. Because we were at the city of Redwood City, attending their council meeting. They also had this same item, the twin version of the item, on their agenda tonight to be considered by the city council in Redwood City. There are seven members of the city council in Redwood City. Only four were in attendance tonight. This item passed in Redwood City on a four to zero vote, approving the, the contract. And so, now it's before you this evening. As the council will recall, this item goes back many months now, since the council authorized us to begin working on developing a contract for a full-service fire model with the city of Redwood City. We've had numerous meetings with the staff in Redwood City, the city manager, Bob Bell, city attorney, Pamela Thompson, our joint fire chief, Jim Skinner, and our joint deputy chief, Stan Moppen, as well as Rebecca Mendenhall and Janet Boe, our city attorney, Greg Rubens, and myself, supported by many other staff members in the city of San Carlos and the city of Redwood City, putting together this contract tonight. There's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of different iterations of this contract before. Redwood City and San Carlos both felt it was ready for our respective elected bodies. I'd like to thank everybody involved for their hard work. There were a lot of eyes on this. It got better as a result over time. It did take some time. Most of all, I'd like to thank the men and women of the San Carlos Fire Department and the Redwood City Fire Department, who have hung in there while we've gone through this process of developing this contract. I know it's been uncomfortable for them at times with the uncertainty hanging out there about what would happen and what will happen with this item tonight. Their cooperation, their dedication to serving our community has been admirable. Their cooperation in this process, their thoughtfulness, and what they brought to the table in working out the, the labor issues associated with it, but also providing feedback as to the operational issue implications of the contract, have really been the difference maker in bringing this final contract forward to you tonight and being able to recommend it. With that, I'd like to introduce our chief, Chief Skinner, who will make a brief presentation, followed by our administrative services director, Rebecca Mendenhall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malpey. Mr. Mayor, council members, it's my pleasure to be here tonight. It's been a long road. And as you can see from the, from the first slide, we have Redwood City and San Carlos. And we're partners in this. We have been since 2011. And our intention is to continue the partnership and, and move us forward. A lot of hard work went into this. And as Mr. Malpey said, it's the men and women of the Redwood City Fire Department and the San Carlos Fire Department that continued throughout the whole process to provide the service, excellent service, I should say, to the both communities. And I'm very proud of that. So, where do we start? We started in June of 2011 with a services contract to start moving forward towards October 2011, which is when we, we started the newly formed San Carlos Fire Department. But in June of 2011, we, we did a recruitment, and we, we had a firefighter recruitment test and hiring process, and we got some very good people on board in anticipation of, of October 2011. That was no easy task for any of us, and it took a whole lot of people to get that together in that short timeframe. And as I mentioned before, there's no script on how to start a brand-new fire department in the state of California, the state, or, or even the United States. But we got it done. And I was very proud of that, that start date. But in July of 2012, we had some challenges. And the challenges were because of some individuals left the organization, and we didn't have everybody fully, fully trained to the, to the point where they could fill the positions necessary to run the two, two stations. So, we had a brownout station 16 up on the Alameda for one, one of the three shifts, so one-third of the time. And as you know, that's, that's something that a fire chief and, and never wants to have happen. And hopefully, with this, with this service contract, full service contract, that won't happen again. It'll absolutely reduce the risk of that in the future. So, with that, in August of 2012, we entered into an, an agreement or amended the, the contract to provide for cross-staffing between the two organizations. That gave us the ability to use a deeper bench to be able to fill the, the spots that were not, we were not able to fill with just San Carlos Fire Department personnel. So, that was, as, as you know, was a, was a Band-Aid to the, to the, to the problem. It didn't provide us with a sustainable or long-term solution. Enter into this full-service contract tonight, we'll provide the sustainability and, and the assurance that we'll provide that service without shutting down any stations in the future. That's our goal. So, in February, you directed the city manager to start negotiations for a full-service contract. And we did so. And it was quite interesting, the, the journey from February to tonight. But I'm pleased that we're here tonight, and we've learned an awful lot. And hopefully, with that learning curve, we'll provide the best service forward, and the contract will be something that others will look at to emulate. So, it's a five-year contract, is what we're looking at to start with. And we'll continue to provide the services that we, that we serve today. And that's fire administration, management, command operations, truck service, fire prevention, code enforcement, investigate, fire investigative services, emergency preparedness services, and training services. We'll continue to do that with this new contract. So, the obligations for the city of San Carlos, for the San Carlos Fire Department, will be to have one fire prevention officer that will work out of our office in, in Redwood City. The city will be responsible to collect the fees for service for fire prevention services. So, they'll get that revenue continued in. Retain ownership of, and maintenance of the two fire stations, Station 13 on Laurel Street and Station 16 up on the Alameda. So, the city of San Carlos will retain those assets. Also, we'll retain ownership and maintenance of the entire fleet, which includes the fire engines that are providing the service today, and retain ownership and maintenance of any capital items, which are any, any, any items collectively over $5,000. And some of the examples are protective equipment, or protective clothing, or turnouts, the air pack bottles that we wear. Those are quite, quite costly. And so, San Carlos will be retaining ownership and responsibility for replacement. So, the terms of the contract, five years, starting hopefully with approval tonight, next Monday, which is one week to get this done, which, you know, we've done it in the past. We'll get it done. Through June 30th of 2018, for the first, first part of this. December of 14, the, the contract will be open for review. And part of the, the contract that will specifically be looked at, most likely, will be the per's liability obligations for the city of San Carlos, with us providing the service and the, and the liability of that with, with the employees. So, we'll look at that. Also, San Carlos is going to be required in, to notify the city of Redwood City if they desire to renew the contract no later than January of 2017. And the reason we put that date in there, because the end of the contract ends in, in June of 2018. And to unravel this thing and have the city of San Carlos go out and get a new service provider will be very, very difficult. So, we wanted to have enough lead time to get that done. Hopefully, we won't be there. Hopefully, we'll renew it and, and continue on with the service. So, the benefits for San Carlos, it's in line and reinforces the mission of the fire service, is to, is to have a sustainable, consistent service model that delivers the service to the community 24/7, 365 days a year. And with this, with this contract, as I mentioned, the, the chances of, of brownouts are very slim, and the community deserves the service 24/7. That's our obligation. So, this fits right in with that. It also fits in with the connection with the community. The Fire Department, as we've seen over the last year and a half, has been, the San Carlos Fire Department is part of the community, the fabric of the community. The feedback that, that you've relayed to me, that some of you haven't received from the community, and what I've received was nothing but positive from the interactions with the men and women in the San Carlos Fire Department. Like I've been talking about, stable organization. Stability is something that the, that the firefighters and captains are looking for, were looking for. And I think the community deserves that stable organization to move us forward. And it's sustainable. Having a larger organization coming together to provide service in the region, being right next to each other, is something that's sustainable for, for many, many years. So, the main, the, the important thing is, when we're providing service to another, another city, is to not lose sight of the, the ownership or the branding or, and identity of the San Carlos Fire Department. That's why we'll, we'll continue to brand the fire stations as San Carlos Fire Stations. The apparatus will say San Carlos Fire Department. The community will really not know any difference, because it's the men and women that we provide in the service. And it was important to us to make sure that we, we have the identity of the city, because that's something that we've seen over the last year and a half, that the people of San Carlos crave, and they deserve it. And with that, the only difference, the big difference, is that the, the men and women of the department will be Redwood City employees servicing back into San Carlos. So, moving into the, into the future, what are the benefits as we move forward? Fire station consolidation is something that, because of our borderless system, is something that we, we will have the ability to do. San Carlos has a station up on the Alameda, Station 16. Redwood City has a station up in the hills of Jefferson and Highland, Station 12. Both, both of these facilities are in need of being replaced. To do that is very costly for each of us to do it alone. But if we did it together, you know, we could save anywhere from $2.5 to $3 million in capital outlay to build a station. And because of the borderless system in the region, we could move that station to a more geographically advantageous location, somewhere in the vicinity of, of the Alameda and Edgewood Road, would service both of our communities. We're looking at data right now to see if that is feasible. We believe it is, but we want to make sure that the statistics back up our, our insight. So, with that, there will also be not just the, the one-time capital outlay savings, but also continual savings in running the station, sharing the cost of running the station. That could run anywhere, savings for both organizations of $50,000 to $100,000 on a continual basis. So, we look at other additional fire service regionalization. As you know, in the, in the county, other departments are coming together because of different situations that are unique to them. But I think this is one of the first steps in, in truly regionalizing the fire service delivery in the county. We run essentially, operationally, we essentially run as one department. But I think that we need to really get to the point where we join forces, reduce overhead, save the cost to the communities, and, and without degrading the service delivery to the, the citizens. And I think this is one of the first steps to get us there. We're not going to be able to do that overnight. That's going to take years. But I'm, hey, we got here tonight. So, I think it can happen. It can happen. Potential for further fire service contracts in the region, and specifically with the county. The county runs a fire station up on Evans Road, Station 18, that potentially, if we relocated and came together, and because we're coming together, we could provide service up in that area. The county did, did come forward to us and asked us what we thought. There's no, no official proposal or request for service at this point. It's just discussion. But it is a potential to, you know, our estimates, and they're just estimates at this point, is that we could, we could get anywhere from maybe $4, $4.5, $450,000 each city for providing service into that area. But we want to make sure it's the right thing to do before we get there. But that's another potential, because we're partnering up. Increased relationship and partner partnerships with our neighboring jurisdictions. What this would be, would be, you know, some of the thoughts that, that we, we had were that, you know, if we partner with our neighbors to, to share services in other areas that, that were, were not as expansive in, in the county, is one area would be fire prevention. We could have a fire prevention bureau, you know, one bureau in the south end of the county. You know, we're all, essentially now, we're all essentially working out of one codebook, the same codes. We're looking at the same ordinances. Our missions are exactly the same. Why do we need two or three different fire prevention bureaus doing the exact same thing? And we could leverage the, the specific skills of each individual from each organization to help us do that. So, that's another area that we, we need to explore in the future to save some more, more money. And with that, the financials, Rebecca Mendenhall will be taking over the presentation. I'll be available for questions after she's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. So, the proposed contract before you tonight, all of the costs are shown here on the Redwood City contract line. And these costs were all included in the revised fiscal year 1314 budget that was adopted at the last council meeting. The total costs for year one are about $5.6 million. And for the fire contract, and then our total fire costs, not including the, the legacy costs related to the JPA, are closer to $5.9 million. So, while contracting out with Redwood City is estimated to cost San Carlos approximately $2 million more over the next five years, as compared to the existing hybrid model, this is a huge step toward the station consolidation that the chief was just referring to, as all of our stations will be staffed by the same labor union. $2 million more over the next five years, as compared to the existing hybrid model, this is a huge step toward the station consolidation that the chief was just referring to, as all of our stations will be staffed by the same labor union. So the biggest part of this agreement is the transfer of our fire personnel. Under this agreement, Redwood City has agreed to hire 19 firefighters. Of those 13 will be paramedics, five fire captains, and one emergency preparedness and outreach coordinator. To accomplish this, we had three-way negotiations with staff from the city of San Carlos, the staff from the city of Redwood City, as well as our fire union and our AFMI union. And as a result, we've come to agreement on certain labor terms, and highlights of that agreement are noted here. So, for seniority, our San Carlos firefighters and captains, who are non-provationary now, will have preferred bidding for our stations 13 and 16 for the duration of their employment with Redwood City. Redwood City will count the employment with San Carlos towards seniority for vacation bidding. For the longevity and retiree health benefits, San Carlos will continue to provide the six legacy employees the longevity incentive from San Carlos if they retire from Redwood City, as they are currently vested in our program here. All other employees will be subject to the terms of the Redwood City programs. Instead of cashing out the vacation, we're paying each employee directly. Redwood City is going to credit each San Carlos employee for unused vacation time, and the total number of hours will be the total amount divided by the new hourly rate in Redwood City. And then San Carlos will pay Redwood City directly for an amount estimated to be about $122,000, which was also included in the adopted budget as one-time funding. For sick leave, San Carlos firefighters and fire captains will receive up to 200 hours of sick leave bank, and the emergency preparedness and outreach coordinator will receive up to 142.85 hours. And the reason for this adjustment is they've taken the, it's a similar amount to what the firefighters get on a 24-hour schedule converted back to a 40-hour schedule. For probation, those who are currently on probation will serve the remainder of their probationary period in Redwood City. Those firefighters and captains who have passed the probationary period will not need to serve it again. The emergency preparedness position will serve a 12-month probationary period, since this is a newly formed position as of earlier tonight. And salary, the employees will be placed in salary steps in Redwood City that reflect, at a minimum, the employees' current salary in San Carlos. So as a result of our negotiations with the labor groups, the average salary increase for all employees is approximately 13%. Depending on where each employee is at in their current salary step, the range per individual runs between 5% to 17%. So based on the salary survey that we did last February, this will bring our employees back to the top of the salary range as compared with other agencies in the county. If the JPA remained in place, and assuming that salary adjustments had continued as been done in prior years, this rate of pay would be similar to what the Redwood City salaries are at now. So kind of bringing everybody back to where they were. The total compensation columns here include all benefits, including medical, dental, vision, and pension costs. And the safety employees, our firefighters, will be moving to Redwood City's retirement, Tier 2 retirement, which is a 3% at 55, instead of the 2% at 55 that they are currently at. And that's why you see such a large jump in the total compensation cost per month. So should council wish to move forward with the full outsourcing agreement tonight? There are four resolutions in your binder for you to approve. The first is the amended, approval of the amended and restated agreement for fire services. This is the actual outsourcing agreement. The second is the approval of the transfer agreement for personnel. This is between the city of San Carlos and the city of Redwood City, where they're acknowledging all of the terms that we've agreed to with our labor unions. And then the third and fourth are the approval of the letter of agreement between the city of San Carlos and our labor units agreeing to the terms of the transitional MOUs, which have been incorporated into the transfer agreement. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for staff? Mr. Ober.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, I think, is probably for the chief. Although you probably, you may not have been involved with the writing of the staff report I'm looking at. There's a bullet item at the bottom of page five of the staff report, which reads, "Redwood City's fire chief and deputy fire chief will consult with the city manager of San Carlos regarding operations and services performed in San Carlos." That part makes perfect sense to me. This is in the context of the agreement going forward. Then the next sentence says, "San Carlos will provide regulations, policies, procedures, manuals, and other information to facilitate supervision of San Carlos Fire Department employees." And does that refer to the one employee that we will continue to have?
Yes.
Okay. When I read it initially, I was thinking like, why is this even here? It's for that one employee?
Yes, yes.
Just as a comment to staff, I'd be fine with having them come up with the policies rather than having us spend all that time doing that for one employee. Let's see, I had one other, couple other quick questions. Ms. Mendenhall, when you were going through the five-year projections, and you may have mentioned this, I was looking at some of the numbers and missed one or two of your statements. Are there any deltas in what you're showing us here tonight relative to the recently adopted 2014 budget for San Carlos, or is it all consistent?
It's all consistent.
It's all consistent. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. And then I want to also make sure that I heard you correctly when you were talking about the salary compensation comparisons that, and I know, based on yours and my earlier discussions, that the comparison to where the JPA with Belmont would have been is an extremely difficult question to answer. Well, not difficult, you have to make a number of assumptions. But it's your sense, after studying it for a while, that essentially, we would be roughly where we are with this contract that we're proposing to enter into with Redwood City?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Mr. Grocott?
I just want to make sure I heard correctly, that you talked about first year one, the cost would be about $5.9 million?
The $5.9 million includes the Redwood City contract, as well as the one fire employee that we would retain, plus the equipment replacement costs associated with maintaining the stations and the engines.
Right, that's, okay, so you, I think you just answered where I was going, because I was looking at the bulletin items, and when the chief was talking about things that we're responsible for. So that's the turnout equipment, anything that has to be done. And, you know, sometimes we get hit with some pretty big things, like the time we had to put a new engine in an engine. But those would be our responsibility when those things come up.
Right.
Subject to, I suppose, now, on that kind of thing, you know, the captain in the station looks at all that arrangement. He lets you know, hey, we're needing this stuff, you know, whether it's breathing equipment or whatever. But eventually, so that comes through the chief, and then gets to the city manager, and then comes to the council. This is what they need.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. And then, I had just a few other questions here. You mentioned about the branding is going to stay as it is. Is that in the contract, or that's just a verbal agreement, or how's that done right now?
Well, it's a verbal agreement, and I'll make sure we adhere to that.
Okay. Because I don't want to beat up on you, chief, but I know when, we were told the same thing with the police department, and then, you know, an explanation was given, but we didn't get very far down the road before we had sheriff, you know, things that said sheriff instead of San Carlos PD. So, I don't want to see that happen.
No, it's a different situation. We're not going to spend the money to change it, and there's no reason to.
Okay, very good. This isn't really with this agreement, but you did give in your report about looking towards the future, and further consolidation and regional approach and so forth. Would investigative services fit into that as well, the fire investigations?
Correct. That's part of the, joining the fire prevention bureaus would be, and then fire investigation services also, is a potential.
Okay. And just a couple more. We have, sort of related to that, we do have our own city building ordinances that indicate when a building is either change of ownership, or especially with the residential, if you do so much work, that you might have to put in fire sprinklers. What did we do in this, in these negotiations with carrying over our own ordinances? And related to that, when, right now, when you bring plans in, you know, for that kind of thing, you just turn them into the building department? How would that process happen?
What we're doing now is our fire marshal, Jim Polisi, will continue to help with the fire-specific plan checking, and that services will continue. So we work with, our fire marshal works closely with the building official in San Carlos to get that, just like he does in Redwood City. So, they work hand in hand, and that service will continue with this contract.
And the ordinance will stay as it is? Our ordinance on what requires fire sprinklers?
Correct, until you choose, as a council, to change that or update that.
And it's up to the city staff and Redwood City to route those plans and so forth. In other words, I guess what I'm getting at, chief, is, you know, like in Menlo Park, I just did this. You have to go to city of Menlo Park for one thing, and then you have to go to the Menlo Park Fire District for something else. This would be seamless, you just go in one-stop shopping.
Exactly, yeah. Our intent is to make sure the customer is not inconvenienced by this contract.
Okay. And this last one is not a trick question, but I just, I do want to ask this. When officers are sworn in, firefighters, they have some very specific things that they raise their right hand to and swear. Can you brief that real quick for me, what that is?
I don't have it memorized.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. We're going to have a swearing-in ceremony.
Yeah.
And the city clerk administers, the Redwood City city clerk will administering the oath of office to the new firefighters and officers. So, and of course, you're all going to be invited to do that. Yeah, I could barely recite it back when the clerk was telling me what to say.
That's okay. When we get to discussion, I want to hit on that just a little bit for...
Okay. Are there questions? Mr. Collins?
Just a couple questions. So, I'm trying to understand the, what happens in the middle of the contract? Supposing that a year from now, or two years from now, that the union wants to reopen the negotiations. Is this a five-year salary contract?
No.
No.
It's, the salary portion, or Exhibit C, will be updated annually, and will be approved by the two city managers as we move forward. And that is the costing of the service.
All right. So if there's any change in the, or proposed change in the salary level, we're automatically notified?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I also noticed that we have, what, until the end of January 2015 to notify if we have any issues?
Right, it'll be open for review at that time. Correct.
All right. So I'm not saying this is going to happen, but I just read an article in the paper today about the state budget being shaky, and there's a potential impact on all cities. And I'm wondering, what happens, say, in 2016, and all of a sudden, our finances are impacted by the state, and all of a sudden, we reach another point of, you know, serious financial issues in our own town, and we're, I mean, we like you guys, and we're married to you for this thing for five years.
Right.
What happens in the event that all of a sudden, we look up and we realize that this contract is, because of something that's totally beyond our control, we suddenly now have a situation where it's going to be extremely difficult for us to meet our obligations to you?
Right. And that's exactly why we put in some of the forecasts of the opportunities with this partnership to save money in the future. The shared station, the regionalization, the outsourcing to the county potential, because, you're right, I mean, two years from now, or a year and a half from now, we want to be moving forward with the plan to be able to save money for both organizations in anticipation of something like that. We know that in a couple of years, our purse costs are going to go up, and we have to be ready for that. So leveraging the partnership with some of these other opportunities is how we're going to try to address those issues in the future. And I, I mean, I don't know where we're going to go, I mean, what the economy's going to do, but we're trying to look forward and be fiscally responsible, and make sure that we have a plan, and we start working towards that regardless. I mean, it's our responsibility to make sure that we provide the service at the lowest cost possible. So we'll be looking at all these ideas to help offset some of those potential increases in cost.
And through the mayor, if I can just add a little bit to that. The contract also has a provision that by mutual agreement, it can be reopened at any time. And the, one of the ideas behind that is that we are hoping to, if in the event that there, you know, because what you're describing is kind of an extreme event, but there could also be just some routine issues that Redwood City needs to clean up administratively with some language in the contract that is just being problematic for them down the road. In any of those instances, from the minor to the major, what we want to do is, and wanted to do in the structure of the contract, is allow us to work collaboratively with the Redwood City staff and city council over there, and our city council, so that we avoid the situation where the only time we can talk about the contract is either when it's up, or when we're threatening to dissolve the whole thing by sending a notice. What we wanted to do was create a more stable contractual environment onto the future, and we have language in there that allows us to deal with those kinds of extreme situations in a more collaborative way.
Thank you.
Ms. Clapper, any questions?
Yes, I have two areas of questions. One has to do with this taking a look at the future, and that, in particular, the station consolidation. I'd like to know specifically, what are the next steps, and what is the estimated timeline for taking those steps?
Well, there's funding in Redwood City to study a site, we have to find a site that will work for all of us. So that, I believe that to get the site identified and build a station will be anywhere from 18 months to two years. And I might be optimistic, just to build a station takes upwards to a year. And then to, you know, to get the piece of property, there's two things that the community doesn't want. One is you to close a fire station in their neighborhood, and the second one is for them to open a fire station in your neighborhood. So we have to work very diligently to make sure that we identify a piece of property that both fits the community, fits both of our needs, to provide the service from a geographically advantageous location. So that will take, this next fiscal year, which starts Monday, is when we'll start working on that. So, the first year will be the identification of the piece of property, acquisition of the property, and then potentially another year after that before it could be built.
Okay, thank you. And my other question area has to do with, probably directed to San Carlos staff, perhaps, Mr. Malby, regarding the maintenance of the facilities and the fleet. It's maybe similar to what we're doing right now, without even changing the contract, but I want to make sure I'm clear on who actually is going to be doing this? How has it actually happened from a San Carlos perspective in terms of maintaining the facilities and the equipment?
Well, it happens in several ways. We have staff members who provide maintenance services in-house for some things, and then we have a number of contractual relationships with private vendors for other maintenance services, depending on what the nature of the issue is and how large scale it is. In addition to that, there could be larger things, like let's say that you need to replace a roof on a fire station or something to that extent. That would go through the public project, public works project process, and be competitively bid and those kinds of things, and would be incorporated into the budget. We have money in the budget for all the routine maintenance. I believe we have a contract already for the fleet maintenance with the city of Redwood City, so that's how we handle the maintenance of the rolling stock and whatnot. The other items, the smaller equipment items are really sort of catch-as-catch-can. Some of that's built into the, really, most of it's built into the equipment replacement budget already, and has a life schedule, but we look to our fire management staff to, you know, provide us an update on an annual basis, and if, you know, something broke unexpectedly, we have contingencies to be able to deal with that equipment now today. So it's all really incorporated into the existing budget structure, and none of that really would be envisioned to work any differently down the road.
Okay. I have one speaker card. If there's anyone else wishing to speak, fill out a card, and we can listen to what you have to say. Tony Slimek, I can't say that, Slimek. Sorry, Tony.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff. I thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak before you tonight. It's not my first time here, but I've got to say that it's probably my most proud. For years, I worked in the city of San Carlos as a fire captain, and for years, as a union president for the firefighters local, we have advocated for consolidation of services, to work more efficiently, and work in partnerships with our cities and our councils. And today, this is the culmination of all. This is the perfect storm, although a few months ago, it wasn't so. This is the perfect storm, although a few months ago, it wasn't so, the seas were pretty rough. But through the commitment, I have to say, with staff and Chief Skinner and his staff and the firefighters in the back, we have weathered the storm very nicely, and we look forward to further commitment in working with you as a partner, although we have identified and continue to understand that there are more efficiencies that need to be made, and we are prepared, and I am prepared, to work with you nonstop, because I consider this not to be a sprint, I consider this to be a marathon. And we need to continue and keep the doors open, check our egos at the door continually to make this a better service for the citizens of San Carlos. And I think that we can do that, and I think we're well on our way. I believe that you have picked the ideal partner. I have a high respect for the Redwood City Fire Department, and as a San Carlos firefighter, I always, actually always wanted to work there. So, I just want to reiterate that we want to partner and we want to work together with you, and my door is always open to this council and to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slimek. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, council? Discussion, motions, what do you want to do?
Discussion, briefly?
Go ahead.
I'm sort of leveraging off of what Mr. Slimek said, I think it's important that we remember what we're buying by entering into this contract, because we clearly are paying more than what had been originally anticipated. But if you remember back a year ago, what we're buying is freedom from fear of brownouts. I guess I'm being a little more optimistic perhaps than the chief was, but I'm confident that he won't be browning out our stations. We're freedom from the high levels of turnover, which were driving up our overtime costs, which were driving up our training costs, which were lowering the average experience level of our staff. Frankly, we're also, we're also buying a less-stressed staff, which I've been the recipient of some emergency medical services during my tenure in San Carlos, and I can tell you that I'm always pleased when the people who are tending to me in those straits are not stressed. I'm sure they do a great job either way, but it makes me feel more comfortable when they're not. So, that's what we're getting, and I think it's important that we remember that, and that everybody who looks at the price tag, which is higher, recognizes that. I think it's also important to remember that, as several people said, this is the beginning of a longer journey, we have a lot of other work to do, we do have efficiencies that we need to look to squeeze out of the system. And frankly, I hope that one of the things, one of the things I'd like to see staff come back with, once the contract is inaugurated and underway, I'd like to see some kind of performance metrics for the relationship that could be reviewed with the council and with the public, so that they can understand what they're getting. You know, then those things could include things like incidence of brownouts, although again, I hope that those will be zero, response times, updates on station consolidation, turnover rates, and frankly, one other one, which is a key part of the financial savings that exist in this agreement, which is some measure of the span of control, the ratio of management to people actually doing the work. That's a big part from my study with Ms. Mendon Hall, that's a big part of where the savings that exist here are coming from. So, it's important that we monitor that and make sure that it stays healthy. And I guess the last comment I'm going to make also as regards Ms. Mendon Hall, there are some quirky things in here due to our friends up at PERS. I won't go through them in detail, because every time I do, they make my head explode. But we, as a council, need to continue to support staff, and particularly Ms. Mendon Hall, in her work in running interference for us with PERS, because there are some significant dollar items here that could go either for us or against us, depending how things work out, and she deserves all the support we can give her to make sure that they hopefully go out in the direction which will benefit the citizens of San Carlos.
Other discussion, comments, or... Or motions?
I'd just like to make a couple of short comments. I realize this contract is, you know, it's more expensive than I think we would have liked it, but it actually could have been more, and I would say that I think Mr. Slimek referred or alluded to it, the fact that, you know, it was not an easy road to get there, and I want to commend, with all due respect to the people of Redwood City, I think you guys have done a yeoman's job, and we have a great deal of trust for you. I just would like to congratulate our own staff. People complain about what we pay our employees. Well, I'm, you know, I'm here to say, this is Exhibit A of why people earn what they earn, because they paid attention to the details, and as I said, this could have, this contract could have cost us more, and it took longer to put together, but because of the history and the knowledge and the depth of knowledge that the people in our staff have, we got a much more agreeable contract than we might have gotten had we not had people who have had the experience and the depth of knowledge that our people have. So, I just, I wanted to make that point, because people only ever look at the numbers. The public just looks at the numbers. Why are we paying this person this much? They never look beyond the numbers, they never look at what we get for what we pay, and I think we get a lot. We've been, the city has been through a lot in the last four or five years. We've, you know, we've made the news probably way more often than we would like to, but in my mind, this is an example of what, of what you get for when you pay for competence, and I just want to extend my thanks to the staff.
Any comments? Ms. Clapper, anything?
No, I echo the comments from both Councilmember Olbert and Councilmember Collins. Thank you.
Mr. Grokot, anything?
Yeah, just a few. First one is, Mr. Collins mentioned the increased costs to the contract, but I think if we just look at the history of our relationship with Redwood City, and the first agreement we went into, we paid a certain amount, but to me, it's almost like we got some kind of coupon from Redwood City, because we got a lot of work out of Chief Skinner and Mr. Mop and, and just the whole department, and the things that they put up with, and the, I don't know what you call them, growing pains of working together. You know, it was a tough, tough time going through all that transition, and we appreciate, you know, the service you gave to our city and the way you hung in there with us and worked with us. The other thing I wanted to just comment on is something I saw, actually, when Bob and I were at the retirement party, is you can, you go to something like that, and for instance, Chief Skinner was talking about his going up through the ranks with Chief Frye and sort of their parallel careers and so forth. One of the things I got from that dinner is you can see that, you know, the fire service in this county and all these guys work together tremendously. They do a lot of training together, they fight fires together, they, you know, save people's lives together, they do a lot of this stuff with this boundary drop system, and they see each other, they know each other and so forth. And I think, I don't think you meant it this way, Mr. Olbert, but when you said squeeze out further savings, I don't quite see it that way. I just, as Mr. Slimek alluded to and Chief alluded to as well, working together, coming together like this, there's going to be efficiencies that will be discovered, and when they are, we'll be able to benefit from the savings that comes out of that. I don't anymore look at it as trying to squeeze something out of it, as more just, you notice something that's efficient, that would work better, let's do it, and let's save the money. And lastly, Mr. Collins also talked about, people do look at the numbers and the money, and, you know, when we were looking, back when we were separating from Belmont, and we were looking at Whackenhut, and that was all about the money. And I did not want to go there, and the reason I asked you, Chief, about the swearing in, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but each one of these guys wear badges, and they wear them for a reason, and they swear to protect our citizens and their property, and that's why you go with a professional service like this, a public agency, and you don't hire it out to some contracting firm that wants to come in and offer you fire service, you know? So, enough said there. I'm ready to approve all these items.
Okay, entertain a motion, I guess we break this down, and there's four motions, four resolutions. We don't have to read the, well, I guess we do read the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the council adopt Resolution Number 2013-...
69?
69.
Right.
Thank you. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos to execute the amended and restated agreement for fire services between the cities of Redwood City and San Carlos for fire and emergency services.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Item two, consideration of resolution to approve the transfer agreement of personnel.
Don't we get to, let's see?
I think there's one labeled as a resolution that's not actually a resolution.
There's an amended and restated agreement, is it?
So, Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt Resolution Number 2013-70?
Right.
Thank you. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the transfer agreement providing for the transfer of fire services personnel from the city of San Carlos to the city of Redwood City.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt Resolution Number 2013-71?
Correct.
I can count in order, how about that? Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the letter of agreement between the city of San Carlos and the San Mateo County Firefighters IAFF Local 2400 regarding the transfer of fire services personnel from the city of San Carlos to the city of Redwood City.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Would somebody like to do the next two, or you want me to keep going?
Well, you're on a roll.
All right. I just see one.
There's only one more.
You're right. All right, resolution, I move, Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt Resolution Number 2013-72?
Correct.
On a roll. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the letter of agreement between the city of San Carlos and the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO-AFSCME?
AFSMI.
AFSMI, regarding the transfer of fire services personnel from the city of San Carlos to the city of Redwood City.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to just add a comment, thank you, folks, for all coming out tonight. It's obviously, as the other member said, it's a partnership. I'm extremely happy about it, and showing, your show of support for this situation is just buttresses all my thoughts, so thank you very much for all the hard work that was done, it was already mentioned, and we look forward to a long and fruitful relationship with the city of Redwood City. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move back to item nine A.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the San Carlos zoning map and zoning ordinance, which would create a new zoning district known as Landmark Commercial and include changes to the land use regulations for the existing general commercial and zoning, general commercial industrial zoning district. Two weeks ago, on June 10th, the city council voted 3-2 to approve by first reading Ordinance 1464 to establish a new zoning district, Landmark Commercial, and amend the land use regulations to the GCI zoning district. As you recall, the components to this amendment, number one is a new zone at the properties located at the north and southwest corners of Holly and Industrial. We would create regulations to, for uses within the zoning district for Landmark Commercial and minor amendments to the GCI. We would include two new use permit findings as part of this amendment, include terms and definitions, and amend the zoning map. So, we're available for questions. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Okay, no questions? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Entertain a motion?
I move that we, is it approve? Is that the, adopt? I move that we approve ordinance number 14...
Adopt.
Adopt. I'm sorry. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1464, an ordinance of the city of San Carlos City Council, adopting amendments to the San Carlos zoning map and San Carlos zoning ordinance Title 18 of the San Carlos Municipal Code to establish a new zoning district, Landmark Commercial LC, and to amend use regulations pertaining to the general commercial GCI district.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grokot?
My understanding is since this happened two weeks ago, where we introduced this item, one of the properties has been sold, and it did not sell to anybody interested in building a hotel, it sold to an organization that intends to use it for, I think it's a baker, a bakery's or baker's union, and they're going to use it for an office building and do TI improvements and move into the building, and that's it. So, the way I look at that is, what we're trying to do, we're not moving any closer to the goal, really. You know, a tenant's going to move into this building, and who knows how long they're going to be there, we're not getting any sales tax out of that. It's, to me, this is failed policy. I think we're trying to drive the market towards something that we think we want, instead of, quite frankly, I was surprised with, when we looked at this ordinance and voted not to extend the emergency ordinance and ask staff to work with the property owners and try to come up with something that would work out to all parties in favor, I don't get the idea that that was really done, and I think it's really unfortunate that we are at this point where we are.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Olbert?
The, I've actually, I too have heard of some evolution of things involving property interests there, I was wondering whether or not, since things continue to evolve, if there's anything that staff would like to educate us about.
Sure, there's a lot happening at the site, some details I'd prefer not to go into tonight as they involve private land use interests. Councilmember Grokot is correct in the sale of 551 Industrial to a baker's union, we are in discussions with them per previous council direction on the property. They are, have an interest in using the site as an office, you know, general office use. There are lots of such properties in San Carlos and the surrounding area for such a use, and we're exploring those possibilities with them. In addition, there has been, since the last council meeting, additional interest expressed to the city by developers who have an interest in the site in general, and we're continuing to work with and provide information to those developers, work with the property owners out there, and helping to facilitate those discussions to see what role the city could play for the benefit of the site, not only for the vision of the property as the city has envisioned it thus far, but also to the benefit of the existing property owners.
Thank you. I'll just make the observation, obviously, my personal opinion, I don't agree with my colleague in describing this as failed policy.
Anything else, otherwise I'll call the question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Nope. No.
Council member Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
No.
All right, we need to go back to the consent calendar and look at item six C. Mr. Grocott, I believe you pulled that off?
Yeah, I just pulled it off, because this was an item, I believe, on one of these, let's see, yeah, sewer charges. I voted against it, so I'm going to stay consistent and vote against it again.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please, on item six C?
Council member Clapper?
Yes.
Council member Collins?
Yes.
Council member Grocott?
No.
Council member Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, and the other item, Mr. Grocott, was item six K.
I'll read here, just.
So on this item, this was buried in our budget, and I didn't want to vote against the budget based on one item, but now that it's come out of the budget as a singular item, I'm choosing to pull it off and vote against it as, as well.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Council member Clapper?
I'm sorry, is there a question?
I just, we need a resolution number.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I apologize.
That's okay. Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt resolution number 2013 dash seventy-three?
Sixty-seven, actually.
Sixty-seven. Oh, you're right, it's in order the other way. Sorry. Resolution number 2013 dash sixty-seven, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos to adopt the classification specification of economic development coordinator and amend the management group's salary schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded to adopt item six K. Roll call, please.
Council member Clapper?
Yes.
Council member Collins?
Yes.
Council member Grocott?
No.
Council member Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
And unless I missed something? Whoops.
Need to back up again to item C.
Yeah, we didn't read the ordinance.
I apologize.
Mr. Mayor?
There wasn't an ord, well, we already got.
We have to adopt it.
Yeah, it's an adoption.
We need to read the ordinance, yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt ordinance number fourteen sixty-three, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending section thirteen-point-zero-eight-point-one-six-zero of the Municipal Code, sewer service charges and fees.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Council member Clapper?
Yes.
Council member Collins?
Yes.
Council member Grocott?
No.
Council member Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Thank you for correcting me on that. We, we danced that tune earlier on with resolutions and ordinances, and we almost got it right. Unless there's something else that we need to discuss tonight, meeting's adjourned.